Now, recording to order. First up, we have on our workshop this morning, Public Works.
Morning.
Good morning.
We only have one item on the consent agenda today, and that's a final acceptance and release of retainage for the courthouse improvement project, and that's to Lee Contractors in the amount of $23,911.69. In our construction program, Roosevelt Grade, we're still waiting for our florescic results, which we should get in August. We haven't received them yet. Now, Small Works Guardrail Project, the contractor's still waiting for all the materials to get started. Courtney Road, contractors making great progress out there. They're digging out unsuitable material in the lower section and replacing it, backfilling those holes in sections with the bad material, building up the curves, some of those sharp 180-degree curves that we have in a lower section. And they also started hauling crushed rock on the upper section, which is a good sign. So, I think they're moving toward paving one lift this fall. So, that's, that's good thing. Yeah. Yeah. And then likely, we won't get to the second lift until next spring.
There's, there's no issues with just a single lift over the winter?
No, you, that's actually common practice.
Okay.
Because that way, you find spots. I'd much rather do it then and then have the questionable lift, the final lift. If you have any issues, then, you know, it's a pat, you do a patch, and then you cover it. Yeah, it's brand new.
Okay. I always just think that-
How deep are each lift?
Two inches.
Two inches.
But there was, I mean, the road was just a thin crust with the chip seal, a double shot before, so it's more substantial than that was, so.
Yeah, let's talk about the change order. I kinda, we related to this. I knew this was coming. So, the contractors wants a fuel and asphalt binder escalation, which is allowed by the contract. So, so you know, I just, we'll start with this, the explanation. This is the asphalt binder. And the way the rule states is, is you have to take it from the day, a week before the bid opened, which was this price here, which was 555 a ton on the east side. That's what the, that's what the asphalt binder price is. And effective August 1st, the asphalt binder price is 787.50 a ton. So, they do, there's a, there's a math calculation you do to get where you are. So, what we did is we prepared a change order. It will not be paid on August. It'll be paid whenever the time comes. But we have to bring a change order to you guys because we'll be spending, because they've already asked for the fuel escalation part of this. Instead of going back and forth, not knowing we're asking for the change order at the $266,000. And that's still an estimate, though. That's using August 1st prices because the contractors asked for June, July, and from the extent of the job for fuel. And so, if you look at that, the fuel escalation price is $138,000. That, again, as fuel keeps going down, that price will go down. The asphalt binder price is 127. That's, again, using that price. We're hoping that goes down, but we're not seeing, you're not seeing much change. If anything, you're seeing it go up. If you look at that, the asphalt binder, and it's based on that. But that could change, again. That could go down. We're gonna pave one lift this year. So, this way, the contract is set. Again, we would spend what we're gonna need. Now, I built, I gave you this a while ago. This is the spreadsheet I created for Courtney Road. And when we, when we came to you and said, "Look, we need the extra half a million because we don't, we don't have it." It came in. I had a 200, we had a $200,000 contingency in here. So, and we also had a $200,000 wintering. If they pave and get to where they are today, our wintering should be very minimal. So, we're not asking for more money to do this change order. We're asking for you guys to sign the change order because we don't have the-
Yeah. So, my authority is up to 50,000. Thing, change orders over that, the board approves, so.
And we have not produced the April or the July's pay estimate because they want the fuel escalation as part of July's pay estimate. They've asked for that.
So, how much, did you say? The fuel is expected to be 138,000 up to this point?
No, no. That's total, this is all total for the job.
Okay.
This is total, based on, what this is, is this is calculated based on planned quantities. Because you get fuel escalation on just certain items, like roadway X and bankment, watering, things that you use equipment on. You don't get it on everything. But what we did to come up with this number is we take what the planned quantities are, multiply it by the escalation rate at today, and that's what the change order states. So, that gives us, so that adds to the contract. Either that or we'd be coming back every month for a change order. And I don't know that we want to really do that. Again, we would only spend what the planned quantities are and also what the escalation price is at that time. It will be figured every month when we make the payment. So, the 138 right now is unless, unless fuel goes up again, this would be the worst-case scenario.
So, if it comes down, it'll be less?
It'll go down, yes.
Right. But they want it per month on what the fuel was that month.
Yes.
It goes up, it goes up, and as it goes down, it goes down.
Yeah. And they don't get a choice. That's, that's how the contract-
That's how it's written. And so, the contract, the asphalt escalation cost, we will not pay that until they actually-
Pave, yes. It's figured on the day that, or figured on the week that they start paying.
But they're estimating it's up to 127,000.
Yes, today.
And the asphalt binder isn't, doesn't fluctuate as quickly as fuel prices.
No.
So, even though fuel prices come down quickly, the binder doesn't necessarily come down as fast.
Does it go up as fast?
A lot of times-
It's a little slower.
It's a little slower.
I would hope that, you know, if you, if you're getting it on the, you know, it should work both ways, as far as it should be even, it should take longer to, you know, adjust.
It does, um, the state-
Although I seem to see when I go to the gas pump, if there is something happened in the supply somewhere, which I know won't even get here for three or four months, miraculously that it-
Immediately.
Immediately, it is on there. But when it's the other way, it takes mon, well, you know, it's gotta work through the system for that savings to get to you. It's like, huh, okay.
Well, the contractor doesn't get to make the call. That, the state actually does. And for, for some contractors, it can be a bonus. Because, like for us, you know, we didn't pay anything near that when we got ours, because we bought ours a long, a while ago and got locked in. Some of the contractors are locked in, but that doesn't matter because that's not how the thing is written. And some aren't. So, they did it to protect the ones that aren't.
So, just so long as, as the contractor didn't pre-buy the asphalt when it was cheap and is now asking for an inflation, even though they've already bought it?
Yeah. We can't do anything about that if they did.
Well, we don't know if they did.
We ha, we have to go by the, this escalation.
Yeah, that's the contract.
That's the contract. State controls that. Because they say, you know, it gets, then they're in the middle of the two agreements between the distributor and the contractor and what their contract is. Because some of the distributors say, "Yeah, I know, but we pay a lot more, so you're gonna pay more."
Yeah.
The nice thing with our contract is, because we write it in, they have to honor that price. And I don't know what the private guys have got written into theirs.
Or our chip seal oil.
Our chip seal oil.
So, yeah, we write it into ours that we're, we're locking that in. They can go out and buy that in the future for that cost. But we don't know if our contractor's doing the same.
We do not now.
Because if the contractor did the same, then why would they get an escalation when they've already pre-bought it?
Exactly.
But how is that not written into our contract that it'd be expected that we do know this?
Well, they're kind of at the mercy, since the asphalt, hot mix is the last thing on the job. They don't really know, you know, would they get to it this year, next year? I mean, originally, we didn't think they'd get to paving any of it this year. So, you know, now they're forced with, whenever the contractor's ready, that's when they have to pave. So, it's harder, harder to control that, I think. Which is why they came up with this method of, you know, kinda, if, there's a big unknown there and a risk for the contractor.
So, is there a, I mean, there's a fuel escalation. Is there a fuel de-escalation? So, say the pri, like, we left the contract, we got that, and the price of fuel went down, do we get to deduct the, so it only works to protect for inflation, not for the price going down?
Yeah.
That's a pretty sweet deal on a, like a, your bid is only a bid, it's a, it's a bid-
It's a starting bid.
It's a starting bid, and if costs go up, you're allowed to recoup the, but if the costs go down, you get to keep it.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, you're right. It is, it's one-way.
It seems one-way.
They don't get it if it's minor. It has to be, it has to be quite significant.
I mean, and, you know, that, that's more of an academic thing. I mean, frankly, I'm surprised it's as little as it is. I was, I was kind of bracing for it being worse, being, that, that's actually a way better number where it's within the, it's within the contingencies and the, and so it-
Are we seeing any other change orders? Or expecting any other change orders?
At this point, no. We're moving along. I checked that our quantity seemed to be pretty good. We have a lot of digouts, but we anticipated that on the lower section. The asphalt on lower section's not very good. We knew that. We anticipated a lot of digouts. We have a little more roadway X, but we have less rock X, so that's actually good for us.
Okay, we do have less rock X.
Yeah. We're at, we're at about 130% on roadway X, but 11% on rock X.
Wow.
So, that's pretty good. We expected a lot more rock than we found. I mean, that was at the end of July. We have, we have had a shot in August, so that will go up, but we will get nowhere near that. But we know we can, because the two together have to be 100%.
Right.
So, we'll be at least 30% under our rock X at the very least. That would say we'd have rock the rest of the time, solidly won't. But we're still sitting, we're sitting pretty good as far as that goes.
Okay. Yeah, like you, I'm kind of surprised it's not more.
I'd, yeah, it's actually, um-
And I just want, for the record, everyone to also realize that this bid was also, how much under the next bid? Was it $2 million?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so, even with this increase and, you know, the inflation of fuel and asphalt, we're still way below the next nearest bid.
Yes. Yeah. For what people pay at the pumps, right, Dave said, "Well, yes, it's a lot of money." It's still considering how much they use a day in fuel.
Oh, right. Yeah. Okay.
We'll bring the change order forward next weekend. Thank you.
Do it today.
All right. Annual striping, contract, Phase 1 thermoplastic work is complete, and that's our sidewalks and crosswalks and arrows, those kinds of things. On the design side, so we opened some bids the last few weeks and clicked that path. I think we were double our estimate, the bid was. So, we kind of have to regroup here and look at doing some more of this in-house. And so, we will be recommending rejecting that, that bid that we received for that work.
Totally fine with that.
Okay. Courthouse parking lots, we were, we had one bid, and it was $400,000 above what our estimate was, and we recommend rejecting that, too. We'll do some of the work in-house. We can't do all of the work. While we can do some concrete work, we're not really experienced with curb gutter, and that's a little more, it's easy.
I'm a little rusty, but it's-
All right. We'll get you out there.
Bring the trowel in.
Most of it's buried. Yeah, so it's the gutter peeds. That's the, gotta get your grades right.
Yes.
Yeah.
And your curb, you gotta get it straight.
So, it's straight, yeah. Well, that's, yeah, that's easy. It's more the elevations are, so that you're, you know, because you're got, you know, you, the crown of the road, you want, you want the water to run down the gutter, not off the gutter, onto the asphalt. That's, could be a challenge sometimes.
And actually flow down.
And flow down the gutter.
Right. Yeah. So, we'll be regrouping on that one. Some of the work we'll do in-house, and some of it, we may probably have to wait until next year. Because if the, both of these projects, we bid them so late because of numerous things, that this is, this can happen. And everybody's super busy, so you get a high bid, because they're gonna do it when everybody's busy.
Do we, if I may, do we, is there work that we can do so that we could open at least some of it for use, you know, over the winter?
Yeah.
Like if we, you know, prep things, I, understanding that it's gonna cause some more work later, because you have to go in and kind of re, I'm just kind of anticipating, you know, we've been telling people, "Oh, you know, thanks for being patient. I know it's been hard, and, but we're, we're almost there, and we're gonna have all this parking, and it's just gonna be wonderful." And now, we have to say, "Oh, yeah, no, it's, you gotta make it through the winter, and we'll do it next year." And so, it'd be nice, maybe, again, if it's impractical. I mean, I allude to, I mean, it's, it's similar to, I always tell people, "Please don't move into your house before I'm done building it." Because it's, yes, you can, but it's not a good idea, because it will cause trouble later. But I don't know. So, I, that's just, I'm, I, I don't know. I'll, I'll take your recommendation either way, but is it?
Yeah. We're gonna look at the pieces we can do, you know, really to finish the lot over here where Annex 3 was and 5. There's some drainage work in the intersection down there, and then we have that bulb out that we have to remove. So, there are some things that we need to do. We'll do as much as we can and our crews can do. And then, you know, the paving, if we can get that lot prepped and ready to go, we might be able to get it paved. Annex 1 lot is, I mean, really, it's prepped and ready to pave, except for, you know, you usually do the curb and gutter and sidewalk first. But it doesn't mean we can't. But that one, that lot's farther away, but, and the lot behind the jail was prepped. We just temporarily chip sealed it. We'll be looking at, you know, how can we get some of this stuff accomplished and so people can park?
Yeah. It's like, I mean, I can park on gravel.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
You know, and if it's not, that's, that's fine. If it makes sense not to do it.
Yeah.
We'll just take the-
We'll try, yeah.
Eat, is fine. Because I think people would understand. You know, yeah, you could've had it this fall, if you, did you really want us to spend $400,000 of your money?
Or, yeah.
Or is it worth $400,000 to wait to next year?
Yeah.
Or, I'll guess, I should be accurate and say potentially, because we don't know-
No, we don't know.
We don't know that we're suddenly, we're gonna be on budget next year.
Yeah.
If we wait. And I suspect it'll be less. We're gonna save something, because that bid was, like, the primo.
Yeah. Being early is always good in bidding. Okay. The other couple of projects on the list, the Rock Creek Bridge painting project, we'll be getting that one ready for early 2023 advertisement. Sundale Road, Old Highway 8, design work continues on that. Let's see, maintenance projects. We had some issues with the chip spreader, so I think it's fixed and ready to go now, but we'll start next week. Chips, or chip sealing on the, the east side, Golden Dale East. Right now, the crews are working on the radio tower site still and doing some grading and patching. West End crews are patching. So, they finished their chip seal work and are dropping back and patching. Facility side, I think one of the, we're still waiting for, the word back from the HVAC people on the few remaining issues in this building. The wireless bridge to Annex 4, so we right now have a, we have one cable that runs across from the courthouse roof that was supposed to be wrecked out at some point in time. One, and then we moved Juvenile in there, so we kept it. But we found a way to have a wireless bridge that will be installed next week that will allow us to get rid of that last cable and disconnect it and get rid of it. So, for a fairly economical way to do it. So, we looked at stringing a cable, connecting it back up to this building, but it just, that, those methods were all really pretty expensive compared to this. And since it's temporary, a temporary connection to that building until they move out, there's no sense in spending a lot of money. Not really anything new on the HVAC replacements. Radio tower site.
Radio tower site, the carpenters are up. We've, we poured the walls and footings. On Friday, we pour the floor. We put in the propane lines, and PUD puts in the main power on Thursday, temp powers in. So, we should be energi, we went through our electrical inspection, we're good. So, we will energize this week. So, that'll be good. And we're just, we're keeping moving forward. We're hoping to have the shelter constructed middle of September. It will be complete. And then, we're going back and forth. Tower, to get the tower up or get it out to bid, you know, I'm concerned about the prices on that. They're still saying the lead time is eight to 10 weeks. We'll see. I think that's a little op, option, or-
Optimistic.
Optimist, very optimistic.
Yeah, very optimistic.
But our, I'll be honest, our time is starting to run low, because by the time you bid it, the contractor, it's awarded, and then they order the tower. It's, I don't know that we're gonna get there.
Even eight weeks.
This year, yeah.
This year.
Yeah. I don't know that you're gonna get there. Everything else will be in place. And then it'll be a matter of when you can get up there, you put the tower in, and it should be pretty much ready to go with, with a few other things. But we're also working on the licensing and all that at the same time. So, that's still moving forward.
Our big event in August at the fairgrounds is obviously fair. And so, our crews are working on that. We're kind of recruiting other people from the office because we just can't fill the spots that are open. And so, we'll, we'll do what we can. I think some of the, the requests for maintenance work will be prioritized, and we may not get to some of the other things that can wait. So, just because we don't have enough people to do everything. And after fair, then we'll, we'll get back to and finish up those backlog of things that need to be fixed and maintained. Follow-up issue, so I, I, there was an email that Lee sent quite a while ago and said it might come up, but it never did. And I keep thinking about it, and I actually put it on the list. I don't know what we'll be able to do with this.
I think other than just, just maybe communicate it to the WashDOT folks so that they're aware. I mean, we, you know, we always, it's, it's difficult for people to understand that we're not, every road in the county is here, it's us. It's, and that's really about all we can do, as far as just let them know. I know crosswalks and, you know, have been a struggle with WashDOT where they really don't want them. They want to get rid of them. And so, it seems like every time they, you know, repave, there's one less.
Yeah.
Just like the railroad.
Yeah, it's like the railroad. Every crossing, there's like, there's always one less. And so, it's, I mean, that's really, although I will say, I think if we make a concerted effort to communicate with WashDOT, you know, we saw that in, in Murdoch with the speed stuff, where they did modify, like, their original plan to what it, it wasn't what the community was asking for, but it was more than what they had originally were, said they were gonna do. And so, it did move the needle, and I think it's the same thing with the crosswalk situation, particularly in Lisle. They, you know, because I remember, there used to be four, and I think we're down to-
One or two.
One or two now. And, you know, I know the goal is-
None.
None.
Yeah.
And so-
I think they're, they're, you know, safety's a big issue for WashDOT, and I think, like we saw in Murdoch, I think if we, if, maybe we get these people in contact with Dave Berkey.
Right.
You know, that seems to be a good avenue to get it to their attention where they need to respond, you know? If there's people parking, you know, too close to the crosswalk, so you can't see, they don't want that either. And then, the speeding issue is, you know, kind of an ongoing thing.
Right, that's, yeah.
Yeah. State Patrol.
Yeah. And I would say, you know, living there, it's, it doesn't seem that chronic to me. I'm not, I, I think most folks, like, I think it's, you know, there are folks that just think the speed limit is wrong, and they should be able to roar through town at 55 miles an hour. And, but I think the bulk of people, it, they do comply, and they, you know, we, we go the speed limit. Although, I'm still adapting to Murdoch. I will be, I'll be honest. I'm glad they put the thing on the road, because that's about what I noticed. It's like, what does that say? Oh, yeah.
Good idea.
So, by the time it, you know, goes to the lowest, I'm there, but it's a, it's a much steeper deceleration than you're supposed to have.
But you get there.
But I do get there.
At least you're going uphill.
Yeah, I'm going uphill. So, yeah, so I don't know if there's a way, maybe, I mean, I could do that, because I know the Francis front, they did reach out, I had responded, and then I didn't hear anything from them for quite some time. And then, last week, while I was gone, I see there was another, I think last Thursday or Friday, there was another, just to follow, they responded to mine from two weeks before, and just was asking for more information. And I think probably the best is that we need to get, anybody that has those, is get them to the right contact directly.
Yeah. Because it's impossible if you don't know.
Right, if you don't-
To find the right person.
The right person.
Yeah.
Because the, you know, WashDOT's a big, kind of monolithic organization.
And they're not, they're not in the office.
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The last one on my list is more for Dan. We have a meeting on Friday. So, to discuss the artwork with, with the Historic Society.
Oh, okay.
Oh, and then we have, the other thing we kind of discussed, yeah, last meeting. And I, we'll actually go to page 2 of the sheet, because that's, because there was maybe writing a, a grant to, for landfill gas for this. We've updated the costs, because when these were first done, they were done in 2020. And I'll be honest, we looked around, tried to get it as, it's 40% increase. That's what we're seeing. And what I did is highlighted the stuff in yellow, and talking to the PUD, talking to our consultant, this is the stuff that needs to be done to deal with the orthophosphate. That would, you know, probably help sell our permit to DOE, our discharge permit, which now sits in the, kind of la-la land type of a scenario. I mean, it's, it's actually expired, but they're letting us still run with a temporary. But there's a lot of money there, I'll be honest. It's $2.5 million as well. And, you know-
So, is this expected every 20 years on these systems, on major renovation?
Yes. And so, you would renovate this. These actually include the upgrades, what would take care of the orthophosphate, but that's not a huge cost. It's like, for instance, you're looking at new, new telemetrics. The telemetrics is- The telemetrics is probably, for instance, this telemetrics costs is hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Of that hundred and thirty thousand, maybe twenty-five thousand of that is extra cost to make it take care of, help it take care of the orthophosphate. Um, and honestly, you probably see that anyway, cause what it allows it to do is allows it to, the plant to shut down on its own for one hour every day, or in the lowest time, say two, three in the morning. It'll actually shut the plant down and allows bugs to grow that, that'll eat the phosphate. Uh, we don't have that system in place now and we shouldn't have. I mean, when we built it, it wasn't, wasn't really something that was available. But I guess if you want me to write the grant, I'm looking for what, I don't know what the ballpark is for landfill gas. How much we would go after, or what the, what the thought is.
Well, I was looking at the.
Project, yeah.
The project, the proposed project lists already. So is um, cause the P U D is proposing not, you know, between everything that every, they wanna do and the little bit that we wanted to do, not including this, it basically consumes the whole fund balance of that fund. Which I, and I don't know if some of these could be pushed out as far as their projects that they're bringing. This is, give them everything they want, that's what it would take. There's a little bit, there would be, you know, and there is two hundred and fifty thousand, is that right? A year flows into that fund. So that's the, as of this year. And so there will be, I mean, there will be additional uh dollars in there. Um, but I don't see based on the, so I don't, there's not enough money to do everything they want and everything we want. In the timeframe that everybody wants to do it, there, there will be a deficit in the fund. And so somebody's gonna have to give as far as push the time on some things. Um, you know, there will be eventually, and it's not a huge, I mean, within a couple of years, you know, there, if you push things out, you can't do your whole list, but maybe you can do most of your list and within a couple of years, there's enough, there's enough revenue coming in to pay for everything.
Yes.
Should be.
Well.
And all this doesn't have to be done.
Well, not that, yeah.
Right. All this does not have to be done at once.
Right.
I mean, it's all part of.
So is there, so Dan's idea was to use, to pull off the Goldendale wastewater treatment improvements and use point oh nine dollars like we already have it set aside and then do a project in this one in order to make up that, that two hundred and fifty thousand. But I mean, the only one I'm seeing that really falls in that range is the aerobic digester aeration and mixing improvements.
Yeah, the stuff is expensive. I mean.
And so what is the MCC replacement?
Yeah, I was curious what that is.
MCC is. I apologize. It's uh, it's, it's. I can't remember.
That makes me feel better, actually.
Oh, I can't believe this.
Off list.
If we don't know what it is. We must not need it.
No, 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 no.
Well, it says we already have one if we're replacing it.
Well, we do have one, yes. It, it's, 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 it's the whole slot computer system, basically.
The computer system is nine hundred thousand dollars?
Cause it opens and closes all the gates and operates all the stuff.
Is it not working?
It is working, but it is getting to the obsolete stage again. This stuff, and this is twenty twenty-five, so you know, Dan asked for the stuff, so that's why. This is the project list. What you see here is the project list that needs to be done that's not developer driven. Now, if you remember, it's like a seven million dollar price tag. But all that, excuse me, the rest of that stuff is based on development. So if you don't have the development, you don't have to do it. And you can, you know, the idea is, is you raise your, your uh development fees enough that covers that. So that's not an issue. The rest of it's not a real problem. It's this piece here for the plant that's not, is not developer driven. This is.
All of these are not developer driven.
None of these are developed, these are.
So, so we have two point five million dollars in costs in the next three years. And we have how much sitting in that account?
Right now, one point four in landfill gas.
No, 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 in the account with the wastewater account down there. Two hundred thousand or something.
There's, there's about that much. The P U D has, yeah, net.
Well, I'm just, cause we're gonna have this meeting down there and it's not, doesn't look pretty when you've had twenty years to prepare for what you know is gonna be replacement of all these systems. And you've got two point five million in costs and only two hundred thousand sitting there on an enterprise fund that's supposed to pay for itself, nearly pay for itself.
Well, but that just is the, why you have to have the whole conversation with the community is the rates have to be adjusted.
Yes.
They're not, they've never been.
Yeah, they considered this. If you go back to the original rate study, they looked at all this stuff, hey, we should collect, the rates would be a hundred dollars a month. And, but there was a decision made that, no, this is what it's gonna be. We're not collecting for that, that's.
Talking to P U D, some of this stuff could be pushed out. They're willing to take the risk. Some of this stuff could be, you know.
What could be pushed out?
Some of these different items could be pushed out. Um, we have to come up with a good plan though, if we wanna get our.
Permit.
Our permit renewed. Renewed. Cause that's probably the worst skeleton in the closet is not having our discharge, having our discharge permit hasn't been renewed. And you know, it's been back and forth, there's been so much turnover at DOE. But it's something that we need to address or at least have a very good plan to address. So we can finish our plan, submit that and move forward. And you know, the idea is, is, you know, we'd go to DOE and say, you know, we're not made of money. We can't just come up with two point five. Here's our plan over a five-year period, ten-year period to, to make these replacements. And you know, we're looking at increasing fees or whatever, I don't wanna get in your realm, I apologize, but you know.
That is, I mean, that it to me, that's, that's the answer is, and that's, I mean, in my mind, that's the point of the meeting with the community is to, we've got to start the conversation with them and show them all the stuff. And it's like, you know, we should have been collecting more all along, but we didn't because there was a decision made that we were just gonna subsidize the system and we're, the subsidy's over. And so now you've gotta pay your own way and this is, that's part of the plan is that we're, you know, we're gonna have to play around with those rates. Cause this, this won't, this won't cash flow the, at the current rates. It can with a rate adjustment and we could play with what that is as far as how mu, you know, if you push some things out and you did, like, there is a path that, you know, we get the rate adjusted to what is basically the average rate with all the other wastewater plants in the county. The system will pay its own way because all the other ones do. And there's nothing special about this system that is inherently more expensive to operate than any of the other systems. It's just you gotta get that, you gotta generate more revenue from, from rates to pay its own way. And that's a difficult conversation for that community, cause if you have been, if you've been subsidized for the last twenty years, none of us like to pony up. And it's like, I mean, it's not, I, I mean, I don't think, I think when we looked at the numbers, I mean, it's, it's not insignificant, but it's.
No.
You know, it's like, I think immediately, really the, I mean, the, the recommendation I think is gonna be immediately, starting in twenty-three, it, it needs to go, it's a ten dollar a month increase just to set that. And then the escalators like everybody else have that's in there. And then the financial picture looks a lot better. Where it gets you way closer. I think there still needs to be some grant.
That's still not gonna get you to.
It's not gonna get you to that.
You can build these big projects.
No, but these, I think the idea would be these projects don't need to be built. Like you can spread them out a little more so that you can generate, you can generate some cash. You have more time to generate that cash to be able, and you're still gonna have to have some grants. There is no way. These are some really big capital things that you really should have been saving for the last ten years to pay for. And so now you're trying to catch, you can't put it off for ten years.
Yeah.
And the other part of that is ten years from now, it will just cost more.
More.
So you gotta catch up and there's gonna have to be some, and that's a discussion we're gonna have to have the P U D over the landfill gas fund, is that, I know these are your priorities, but I don't see Dal'sport on here. And so it's time to, you know, we can all give a little bit and.
So I guess the question is, is we have something here that we need to do in Dal'sport now that would go for the, you know, L F G funds that we would then hold over the engineering for the point oh nine dollars? Leave that there, take Golden, switch it off. But I mean, do we have something there that we're willing to spend that money on? Because I don't know what's more important. I mean, an oxidization ditch aeration or the digester or?
Cause that gets the permit to be left in the state, all of them.
So it, it's just the sequence. So I guess.
Right, and so we need a big plan on the sequence on what comes when. Because if we don't have a project that is, that we can actually do and accomplish, then we'll just leave Goldendale on there. And it was a good idea, Dan, but.
We can do any, I guess my question back is how much money do we have to spend? Because all of them are independent of each other to s, to some degree.
Right, but what's. But you can only, you know, you can only fund, you can't fund a half a project.
Right, you can, you can't fund.
Well, you gotta do them in a chunk, whatever a chunk is.
Right.
What is that? So if we were not gonna move, you know, so at least two hundred and fifty.
Say, if you weren't gonna, if you weren't gonna move two hundred and fifty, then we would do, we would do the uh telemetry plant panel replacement project. Because we could afford to do that.
And is that needed right now? Like, like.
That is needed in twenty twenty-four, so yes, that, that has a quicker path to needing. Because a lot of that, it operates the way the rest of equipment operate that and the oxidation ditch. Those are the two critical items that need to be done first or should be done first. Um, and then the rest of them follow. So yeah, one of those two would be the project to take off. I mean, if you wanted to do one, it would be that. And the oxidation ditch is, you know, that's a, that's a lot more expensive project. That's, it's hundred thousand dollars.
You know, or do you not do, or do you just save it? Nobody says you have to spend.
Right, or you save it and then you do.
If you save two fifty for twenty-three and another two fifty in twenty-four, it gets you to five, you're getting clo, and there is actually, I mean, you could. Cause there's.
Projects on the cap.
Yeah, I mean, it would take the fund to zero, but.
So my issue is, is like when you use point oh nine dollars, it was that, you know, that's for engineering on the wastewater treatment.
Right.
And when I look at point oh nine, I'm looking at other things primarily with point oh nine dollars. I know it's pumps and pipes for, you know, economic development and growth.
There's one other project that is not on this list that is in the budget that we've pushed off and pushed off. And P U D's asking for it, you know, so this is something that has to be done. It's actually on this list. I didn't highlight it. I should have, it's the clarifier. You remember it, it's been on.
Been on there for a long time.
We, we, and we kept, we kept, kicked the can down, we replaced one, we haven't replaced the other one. It's actually, I, I did not highlight it, but it is actually.
Build east clarifier.
Yes, there you go.
What's the price on it?
Four fifty. It's in the blue under the twenty, twenty-two budget.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we did one, they did one previously, they rebuild them.
Yeah.
And they've rebuilt one, there's two of them, and so this is the second one. So this one's in the proposed budget for this year, twenty-three.
Yes.
But we only have.
But we didn't fund.
You haven't seen it.
We haven't seen it yet.
Yeah.
So if that's in the proposed budget for twenty-three, is, would that be using two hundred and fifty thousand of landfill gas the more appropriate place for that?
That would be.
That would be your guys' call.
Yeah, we're not sure if that's how you wanna do it or not. But yeah, that needs to be done.
Two hundred and fifty more, a hundred and fifty thousand more dollars in the actual fund after that.
Yes.
Yeah, so the, the thing to remember about the uh, the dollars that P U D has, there's that we've collected over the years that provides that buffer. So they can't, if we have an emergency, they can't, or something comes up, they can't spend their own money and they get reimbursed. They have to have somebody, they can't use their funds or somebody else's funds to pay for our plant repairs or improvements. So it is good to have, keep some kind of a buffer there so that they can respond and react.
Well, with that four fifty, is that gonna drain most of that account?
No, we were gonna come to, to you guys for additional money in the twenty-three budget for that.
So general fund dollars?
Usually it's been landfill fund.
Yes. So this, that's why we wanted to bring it up. If you're looking at that, maybe we do landfill gas or there's other avenues.
So there's one point two in the fund.
Landfill gas.
Yeah, or one point three in essence at the end of this year. A hundred and twenty-five thousand anticipated. So we, we're asking for two fifty for Goldendale. Would it make sense to ask for two fifty for Dal'sport as well? And then that's five hundred and then, I mean, I'm just going into the negotiations. I'm trying to think, you know, what would be fair and where.
Yeah, and then they're gonna have to re-prioritize, you know, their list.
But we need a pretty good write-up of why, you know, they've got write-ups for all theirs. And they're saying, you know, these are much smaller systems that can't pay for themselves or aren't paying for themselves.
Again, I would just show them this.
We'll provide, if that's what you want, we'll provide the, the application.
I mean, that would be, that would be my, you know, big statement is, is that, you know, this is for, I mean, it was budgeted for twenty twenty-two. We're gonna drain four hundred and fifty thousand of the fund balance on this. Um, and why didn't you come forward and ask for, why didn't they, since they've been running this thing, why didn't, why isn't that on this list?
Cause the county's just wrote checks for everything at Dal'sport.
Typically, yeah.
Right. We've never spent one dime of landfill gas at the wastewater plant because why spend that money on that when the county will just pay for everything?
Yeah, I don't wanna know what we're toe truly into that thing. So. I don't, but I also don't wanna drain the whole L F G fund. So would you be good with that?
Yeah, I would be. I mean, I think that's a reasonable.
So we'll probably get something put together for the two fifty.
Yeah, and we need to get that sent over so that they can review it.
I'll have it next week for you. That works.
Yeah, I mean, make sure, is that meeting? Twenty.
I thought it was the sixteenth.
It's the, it's Friday, the twenty-sixth.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so next week will be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it for our list. That's it for our list. Sure we went over.
Yep, that's our fault. We missed having a good, long discussion, though.
Okay, good.
You guys have gotten so fast, you know? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too.
Director King.
Morning.
Good morning. You have updated sheets for us or what we had in our packet?
I, there are updates. I have no additional copies for you at this time.
Okay.
I will, I will fill you in as I go. Uh, the first one, uh, we did make something on the consent agenda. Thank you to HR. An authorization to advertise for the administrative assistance position. Happy to report that the recruitment for that position has gone well. So far, we have applications that are promising. But that is on your consent agenda for this afternoon. The public safety radio system, um, what I talked to you about five weeks ago or so was the intermittent key-ups in the system. I was notified yesterday at our bi-monthly radio system meeting those have now been determined to be a receive issue at KAZER till they've narrowed that down or can I continue to work and have plans for next steps for resolution. I was also made aware that the, which is not on your list, the generator has failed to start at testing at the Click-It-That site. So I've engaged Public Works because that is brand new generator there. We just upgraded that site to its own new room and the fire station there and put in that new generator. So make sure that we don't do anything there and it's, if it's still under warranty and so on, that the Public Works is involved in that process. Right now, we have no backup power if the grid fails there besides the batteries. Maintenance side, still in the process of the tier-one and tier-three radio equipment preventative maintenance cycle. And the facilities, preventative maintenance was completed. They did note that the flat top fence is smashed more and more. If you remember, last year, we chose not to repair that. So it is just getting worse. We'll be looking into that. There's also issues with the exterior wall in the seam. That's a prefab building. And it is starting to swell and split. Apparently because of water impingement that then froze and all that good stuff. So we'll be looking into that and see how we can deal with that repair. The other things are on hold. There's gonna be many things on hold because of our staffing situation. The Berdoin site has been completed and was tested a hundred percent reliable. So that repairs was done just last week. The diamond gap low temp alarm situation, that's Astound's responsibility was actually resolved by our support personnel on their annual PM visit. They were able to fix that while they're, still working to get an answer out of Astound for the flat top security camera fault. The really great news for, I guess, operations and maintenance of the radio system is that the PUD has put in underground power to that site. The flat top, correct, sorry. And, you know, that's a big win. Cause that was the site that was always going down and we had to take extra propane one year because of a eight-day power outage. So very glad to have underground power lines to that remote site.
Was that eight-day outage on the lines going up or was that a good portion of Trout Lake as well?
Just the, the lines to the site. And actually, we refilled the tanks on day eight. The power outage went through day nine. But yes, that was that site that goes from Forest Road eighty-eight up the hill there. There's no residences beyond that, so beyond our emergency communications need and AT&T and US Cellular who are also there. You know, there's no, no homes and that's a, it's, can be their last priority.
Upgraded that on their own dime or?
Yes, after many, many years of struggles and us, I've lobbied for that since before I became the director and because it was an issue in, in that very first year, the winter of twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. No, twenty fifteen, sixteen is when we had that multi-day outage and we paid for the propane. It's, and they, when their crews, they've had to borrow larger snow cats from BPA and so on to get there during these winter storms and to repair them. So it was in everybody's best interest. And yes, they did fund that all on their own.
Okay, that's great.
Yes, very thankful. Yeah, and their, their past ops manager was a big part of that and he wanted that to be his, one of his legacy items before he retired. He almost made it. Any other questions?
Nope.
Under radio site leases, mostly under, on hold due to time constraints. However, flat top site land lease with the DNR is in the final approval at the state with their legal. And then they'll be sending it to us for signatures. I've not been able to get any indication out of them as to what kind of cost increases going forward. If there'll be a big jump or we'll just maintain the annual increases as it was before. So we weren't yet able to put that into the budget that submitted yesterday. But I will let you know as soon as I have that number. The radio project, as you heard from Public Works on the shelter construction, also coordinating the grounding plan, which is a very significant thing and something that was either left out or done inappropriate at a lot of our other sites in the original phase of the project. Working through to make sure that that gets done appropriately. In consultation with our support. And working with the con, the consultant also on the FCC licensing, we're gonna have to modify that license because the physical location of the site was moved about a quarter mile and four hundred feet in elevation up. So there's some challenges there with our neighbors to the north in Yakima County. And hopefully they will be cooperative so that we can get that place licensed sooner rather than later. And also facilitating the design work of the public safety microwave system at that site back to the dispatch emergency management building for both the public safety microwave and the security system feed. Should be a commercial-grade microwave link. It's, that's been determined to be the most cost-effective, two separate ones. Any questions about the radio system?
No, sir.
I'm on call taking and public safety radio dispatching. Phil is working a shift again today, so that's why he's not with me. And the call volume report is not available at this time. I did, the EMS district in their board meeting a couple of weeks ago reported that the July EMS calls are up significantly year over year. So I thought I would add that for you. That all is stuff that comes to us first and we generate the calls for them, so. Yeah, there's debate about why we're seeing more and more medical calls, you know, COVID some. But the fact that a lot of people put off their routine medical appointments and, and procedures twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and now that is catching up with them. That's what I'm hearing from the hospital CEOs and so on and the, and the healthcare in the state in general. Why the beds are so full? Because we're still continuing to have to transfer people like way out of our area for medical. The beds locally are not there. And not just like MCMC or Portland, Vancouver, but we can't get them in the Cadillac or we're sending them to Spokane, all those things, so. And Seattle more and more often. Staffing for nine-one-one dispatch remains at a critical state. We've got four comms officers out of the schedule right now. Three of those are in training and going well. One of those is on leave. And then we're preparing for the budget supplemental request. I think we're gonna need to make that request at the end of this month. I think the twenty-fifth is the deadline for that submission, so. I don't think we'll be able to go any farther into the year without making that request in this round. And then to, to cover those wages and benefits in overtime because of the staffing shortage. And we, I have to say publicly that we appreciate your support. When I came to you a couple of weeks ago, as well as our law enforcement, fire and EMS partners. And the three communications officers that agreed to come back and work for us that have, have left for other employment in the past. That made all the difference. So thank you for giving me the ability to do that. And for all those folks to help us out. We are continuing to advertise for the full, three full-time training positions. And see how that goes so we can continue to adapt and make sure that we account for the attrition in training and the turnover. So we're planning ahead for that. Operations and training side, the nine-one-one phone system update project has been completed. Additional punch list items and upgrades are still in the process in the near future as time allows. Right now, time doesn't allow for much. One of those is the text to nine-one-one project that we've been trying to get done for about two years now. The state wanted everybody in the state to go to text to nine-one-one by the end of last year. That did not happen. We're not the only ones still trying to pull that off. The state access, so this is all the criminal justice information systems that we use. Is the remote technical audit is now completed, so that is, both pieces of that is complete. Item that's not on your list there is the new mental health crisis services and procedures update for us or nine-one-one dispatch to communicate a request from law enforcement, the jail or even the hospital at times. It's going very well. At our first weekly meeting this morning about that, I did have time to sit in on that. We did have two requests over the weekend for that service. From our perspective, it went very well. There were some glitches between that service provider, our new service provider and the hospital, the ED staff. But they're working that out and my input to everyone on that call this morning was that it is already vastly better than what we've had for a long time. And thanks to everybody that worked on it and everybody that is currently taking those calls for mental health crisis requests. They were efficient, responded quickly. We had no hassles. Because in the past, literally, it was a fight for dispatch to get a response to law enforcement or jail requests, so.
So is that, we did two ITAs this weekend or we had one IT, I know of one ITA, but then was the other just a, the crisis responder, the lifeline side?
Correct. Yes. As we discussed on Friday, our first, the first request is to the crisis triage line, the, the lifeline service. And then from there, they make the decisions, how to proceed. My understanding from the call this morning is yes, there was one DCR involvement. The DCR was at the hospital at the same time the second one came in. So she was there to see how that went down and that was where there were some issues with how it was handled and they're working their way through that. Any other questions?
Thank you for the update. Sorry, I wasn't on the phone call this morning. It was canvassing board.
Not a problem. That's part of why I'm here. The fire district user agreements were down to just one left to be received, so as of the fourth, which is phenomenal speed to get those agreements back from the fire districts. So we're very happy about that. And we have been in touch with that one fire district and, and they are getting that back to us sooner rather than later. It's all signed. They just haven't returned it, so. No issues this time like we had last time. Any questions about nine-one-one dispatch? The emergency management program. I put the outdoor burn ban code update on hold again through our current staffing and hopefully get back to that in September after I get Phil back on some admin duties out of dispatching so much. The wildfire report and what you see, what you have on your list there is an overview. There was one additional request for mutual aid yesterday. Fire District ten went to Benton County. But knock on wood and all that, I'm not a superstitious person, but others are. We have not had a significant wildfire in our county yet, although there's been a couple of close calls. The, the fire on the third, on Highway fourteen at Monmarque or one fourteen came very, very close, right up to their, their barn. It's their stockyard and the homestead house. And they were able to hit it around and keep it from burning those structures, so. We're dodging bullets so far. On the training and exercise side, had training for the DM volunteers on the fourteenth. Had volunteer meeting and training again this month on the fourth and all based around being able to respond either with the mobile command post vehicle or the EOC stand-up for significant incidents in our county. We've also added the ability with the new Starlink system for internet service that we've been able to test that and determine that it doesn't need to come as part of the mobile command post. We can just take it out there and we're working on getting the appropriate case for it. But you can just take it out there and set it up as long as you have one-ten power, which we could also provide the generator for. So we took it, yeah, last month to the Fire Chiefs Association meeting at Waukeah, which is no site, not very good cell phone service, no internet at their fire hall. And it's in the trees. There's just enough carved out of the woods there for their fire hall in the parking lot. Set it outside the door of their fire station and, and got internet access. Ran the cable in the door and provided internet for a go-to meeting for the EMS council and a Zoom meeting for the Fire Chiefs Association. And so we can do that anywhere in the county if they need for mapping or whatever else, command and control. Just set it out right next to their fire vehicle with a whisper quiet generator that we already have. They have the ability to have Wi-Fi phone calls on their cell phones and so on. Even if they don't have cell service, that would provide that as well. So we're excited about that. As a single resource deployment, you just throw it in the back of any rig and, and go where you need it. And it is also, if we don't use it every month, it will be cheaper than what we were doing and paying for every month. This is only pay as you go. So even if we use it every month, it will be a very, very small amount more than what we were paying for.
What, remind me, what is the monthly charge?
One thirty.
One thirty-five, I believe, for the RV version of Starlink. It's, I think it's one-ten for the home version and one-thirty-five for the. But you only pay for the months that you turn it on.
You actually use.
Yeah. And in our scenario, emergency response, you know, that won't be every month. We will have trainings and exercises that we will use it.
But don't you need to shut it off if you don't use it? Like, you have to put it into suspend mode or whatever?
You can, yes, deactivate it.
You have to deactivate.
Otherwise, it's just on.
Otherwise, it'll just keep charging.
But like I said, we deactivate it and we deactivate it for the months. We're not gonna use it. The, the great part is you don't have to, like, sat phone service if you were doing it that way, instead of just paying a monthly fee to have it. You don't have to call in to activate it. You just turn it on and it sets itself up and then it activates your service for that month. So you, yeah.
Otherwise, you drive out.
Otherwise you drive out there and you turn it on, you're like, oh, it's deactivated. How do I activate it?
You can't without service. Yeah. And even locally, if we don't have internet access, you know, like we had yesterday evening, county lost internet access and all the phones went down and so on. Drop it in the parking lot and provide our own. And if you don't have internet access or phone service, you can't log on to activate it. So they've solved that problem.
Yeah, that is almost one thing to think about doing is having one sitting up on top of the building for your emergency backup when fiber goes down.
For the nine-one dispatch functions and criminal justice information, which is like the most critical in the nine-one phone system. There are security issues with doing that and latency even, but mostly security. Having it as that backup that we'd have to work through and make sure we have all the right IT pieces between the main service and this backup service, that is something that we've already discussed and we just need the time to look into. Yes. Yeah. And it would be far better than paying. I think IT helped us out a couple of years ago to get a redundant internet connection for us for nine-one and our criminal justice information. It was several thousand dollars a year just to have it sitting there waiting for us. So if we can make this work and see just security rules and precautions can be put in place, the FBI signs off on that, then it would be an option. What else? Go through the grants, the usual things. We're still waiting on FEMA to approve the unmanned aerial systems policies and procedures. We have in the process of renewing that grant agreement with the state because it lapsed at the end of July because we'd been waiting for FEMA for so long. But that is in the works and that should be extended sometime into July next year, I think it is. But we fully intend to get that project done by the end of this year. Talked about the CAFA meeting and demonstrating that already, Frank, and went to the Trout Lake Community Fair this Saturday at their request and did public education and so on. That was a good event. He reported to me yesterday. I think that's everything. Still haven't had a chance. Brought it just in case you had questions, but the national significant wildfire potential outlook came out for August through November and I'll be reviewing that. But from a cursory view, nothing's going to change. It's pretty standard year. Now at the beginning of August, in that high likelihood for significant wildfires, August through September.
Do they, I haven't, I haven't seen it, but do they account for the severity as far as rangeland fires with the amount of fuels? Like I was somewhere yesterday morning hiking around and, you know, oh my God, it was.
Four feet in someplace.
It was. I have nev- like it was hard to walk through. It was just grassland and it was so, it was on the west end, but I have never seen it like that. And I just think, wow, if we got a fire in here, just a severe, and it was sort of a grassland timber interface and I, you know, it, you know, things look good as far as the trees are good, everything's green. But I think the severity of the, like this isn't gonna just flash through because there is so much fuel there that, and so I don't know if they, you know, I know that's a hard thing to probably quantify, but.
It'll flash through that hot grass. They're, they add it to their predictive.
It'll flash through, but I mean, it's, it's gonna be hot.
A little, yeah, it will still.
No, it was ungrazed and it was scary. I was scared just walking through.
And that's some of the talks we've had with fire chiefs and DNR and so on that I've been involved with is when the light fuels dry out completely because they're, they're just now doing that, you know, down to the base of the stem. Otherwise these fires that we're talking about would have just taken off and would have been uncontrollable. We would have already lost structures, similar to what they're doing in South Wasco County. There's 11,500 acre fire down there in the last two weeks, which we sent significant mutual aid to. And even just across the river in the Dalles, they've had is it three fires right around the 190, or yeah, 197 and 84 interchange right there on the east end of the Dalles. That's burnt at least twice and we've sent help to them for that. But when that does finally dry out, if it's not already, the next fire starts will be more significant because it's light fuel, but it's still a heavy load of light fuel. So it won't, it won't just flash fast and low like it did before. Those flame links will be more like brush rather than grass this, in these conditions. So those are the discussions we've had and the fact that we all need to be on alert for a quicker response as well as quicker request for mutual aid for, from in county as well as DNR and the fire bosses, although they're on contract with ODF at Dallasport, they can still be available at request. So.
I, that makes me much more comfortable what we've seen in the last couple of years with having them. They, they have been a game changer, I think, as far as in our region that those are, that's a great investment. Thank you, ODF. Especially we're spending Oregon's money. I know, we get reimbursed.
They get their pay.
We get a bill for it.
We have to pay for it, but at the standby time, they pay for it. Yeah. And the yet the other concern is that the DNR is like everybody else, short-staffed. They've also moved their operations from Houston to Dallasport. And that includes their dozer and other equipment. And so some of the chiefs on the west end are like a little nervous, why'd you take all of your toys away? And now it's gonna be a farther response to get to, you know, it was right across the street from the Houston fire station.
Well, are they, are they completely out of Houston then?
I'm not sure, but I know they are operating out of the Dalles. That's what their lead told us at last month's meeting. Yeah. But yeah, they, they have fewer crews in county this year than they've had. In the years past, they are trying to fill those gaps by having their strike teams that go on in and out of service, do a rotation through our county as well. Everybody's doing everything.
Let's, let's just be hopeful. It'll all be for, we won't need any of it.
Exactly.
There's a lot of money to be made in fires.
But there's, I'm just, I'm watching the calendar. Let's keep, keep going, keep going. Every day is one day less.
And historically speaking, yes, our, our most significant wildfires happen actually in the last week of August, the first week of September. Exactly.
All right, sir. Any questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too.
Do you have anything else for the good of the order?
No, I think I'm, I'm good for breaking. If you're ready for a motion. Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to recess the meeting for lunch break back at one o'clock.
I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor of recess, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Being that it is one o'clock, we are going to call the regular business meeting of the Clickatuck County Board of County Commissioners to order. Let the record show Commissioners Soder and Anderson are present and Commissioner Christopher is absent. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda with one add-on under unfinished business. This is agreement between Clickatuck County Public Health Department and Chris Chris Devil Nueva for the purpose of providing expertise and technical guidance in on community-based behavioral health services in Clickatuck County.
I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor with adoption of the agenda with one add-on, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And are we good? I was good with the July 26 minutes. Oh. Okay. Well, I was not here, so I don't feel comfortable. I'm sure they're fine, but.
I already sent in my changes. But we will, we will defer until Commissioner Christopher returns. Okay. Next up, we are going to enter into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. The commissioners will respond at such time as all of the public comments have been heard. And we will begin as always in the room. If anybody has public comment. Seeing none, we will go online. If anybody has public comment, please press star six to unmute your phone, raise your hand, turn on your microphone or your video and get our attention and we'd love to hear from you. Uh, zero, zero, eight, eight.
Yeah, this is Domer Eldred, Goldendale. And taxing these industrial complexes like it's farmland is just subsidizing these green energy companies. And there's a time coming that the tax gap will have to be dealt with and that will be at the expense of the taxpayers. It's bad enough that you didn't take care of business and limiting the negative impact early on. And then you neglected to work on changing the zoning to what it should be for these energy industrial complexes. The mess that you have created for the future is unconscionable. If you would have paid more attention to the damaging effect of these energy projects or went to cease 2020 and got educated, possibly there would be, there wouldn't be such a dark cloud hanging over the future of Clickatuck County. And greater yet is the tragedy of this renewable energy is that 80% of the natural resources needed come from China. And the money that is sent to China for these natural materials and that are needed for the manufacturing of these solar panels are used to enrich the Communist Chinese Party. So it's a pretty negative all-around deal, even working with these companies. But it doesn't seem to bother you commissioners at all. I mean, you're perfectly satisfied with dealing dealing with these companies and feel like you've accomplished something, which is a sad deal for the citizens of Clickatuck County. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Eldred. Next, we'll go back in the room if anybody would like to provide public comment. Okay, back online. Star six, unmute yourself if you're on your phone. Raise your hand, turn your video on. All right. I'm not seeing anyone. I'll get some. Sorry. Thank you. Oh, Sherry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I would like to talk about Under Canvas and the fact that this is still an appeal with the citizens appealing the decisions that our county has made to let Under Canvas have a conditional use permit in order to build and forest resource lands off a road that cannot handle that amount of traffic, which has been proven through the hearing, hearings, court cases. And I'd like to remind the citizens listening today, the taxpayers, you are currently paying our county staff, our county legal system to fight against the people out here on the west side against a death trap due to its location and the use of a conditional use permit to push this on to the people. So I feel that is a waste of our taxpayers' money. The county, the planning department knew well before this was proposed and the application hit your desk, that the citizens would fight against it. You know, before any of these solar proposals, applications, in fact, you have a proposal from Caranger right now that you know about that you refuse to talk about decided off night road and you plan to use a conditional use permit on this. And you know that the citizens of Goldendale are fighting against placing industrial solar complexes around the city of Goldendale and using valuable farmland. So with that, I say that it's a waste of taxpayers' money to continue to go against the citizens on using a conditional use permit to put projects development that hurt people in the area and that affects every single citizen in Clickatuck County. You too can be affected by a corrupt conditional use permit. The Under Canvas is laden, laden with bad situations due to the placement. In fact, it cannot have an evacuation plan because of the road, which brings me to the fact that Oak Ridge Road where this plans to be cited has now been put on the six-year road plan list. And that will make the citizens, the taxpayers pay to upgrade a road that is perfectly fine for 40 houses at this time and not a small city. And I would like to also say, there will, I am, I would like an explanation here. Here's a question. I'd like an explanation on the taxing. In fact, I guess you can't answer this, but I'm concerned with Under Canvas taking down their canvas sites off their platform that is a full functioning single unit living residence of a toilet and showers, but they take down the canvas side, side, and then they will not pay 95 individual living units taxes. That's irresponsible and bad deal to big corporations that hurt the citizens. We make up the difference. We pay the road costs. And you're doing this with, with industrial renewable energy. You're hurting the citizens. Make better deals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boskay. We'll go back in the room. If anybody has public comment, please come forward.
Says it's on green. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here to talk about a topic that's on everybody's mind today and that's manure. At our Farm Bureau meeting last night, we were discussing rulemaking changes that the State Department of Health hopes to make, which will further restrict what are often called concentrated animal feeding operations, a CAFO. When we think of CAFOs, usually we would think about dairies or stockyards. But the State Board of Health, it appears is taking, I won't say taking from ecology, coming alongside ecology to make rules which potentially would be more restrictive such that it could affect property owners even down to five acres. Now, that sounds alarmist and I'm not trying to be. However, that rule in front of you is simply the rule. And it's the, I gave you that because it was the easiest thing I could find regarding the Board of Health's whacks and keeping of animals. I left something with Secretary Snell from the Department of Health. It's a little bit more in-depth. But I just would encourage you to comment, there's a comment period open now until August 17th. That is one week from tomorrow. Let me back up. I would encourage you to further investigate and you may be able to talk to the county's health officer. She may have interest, knowledge of it, although I don't know. But in the past, dairies and stockyards and anybody who had a confined operation where they confined animals where manure could accumulate, had to have a plan or they do have to have a plan. But the, the rulemaking is, I think, expanding at this point where it's gonna affect a lot of people. Yakima County, I don't have data for Clickatuck County. Yakima County has 9,000 five acre parcels. So I can't imagine that Clickatuck County doesn't have somewhere in the hundreds or 1,000. They are not saying they're gonna go down to the five acre parcel and impose restrictions on people. But we can't tell what they're gonna do right now. The typical what's happened, happens presently, if Department of Ecology finds that somebody has a nutrient, what we call a nutrient management problem, they usually address it through the local conservation district. And the local conservation district works on a plan with the. And the local conservation district works on a plan with the farmer to kind of mitigate whatever the problem is where, where the manure is affecting surface water. I think that this new rulemaking would take the conservation districts out of it. And that concerns me greatly because the relationships that the conservation districts have with landowners, farmers, ranchers, et cetera, is important. And it's a relationship based success. It's not a matter of enforcement. And enforcement always makes everybody's blood pressure goes up, go up. So I would encourage you to investigate it further as you have time. Consider commenting if you find it appropriate. Their, their, their day is August 17th for closure of comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barta. Okay, back online. Anybody who would like to provide public comment? Our six, raise your hand, turn your video on. Seven, two, one, one.
Greg Wagner with CESE. From 2006 to 2013, the wind facilities were appraised using the income based method. This method ensured a steady tax revenue to the county. In 2011, the citizens of Vickleton approved $8.9 million bond to build their school. They approved that bond based on the large sums of revenue received from the wind tax. In 2013, Assessor Darlene Johnson changed the appraisal method to cost. In doing so, the corporation started receiving an annual eight and a half percent depreciation on their personal property. And each year forward, the county received less revenue. When this change occurred, it gave the wind corporations a tax break and became a tax burden to the already overburdened Vickleton citizens. Those citizens are now paying additional taxes, taxes not paid by the wind corporation. On May 20th, 2021, Assessor Krista Schroeder confirmed this stating their levy rate doubled. Krista Schroeder also stated, I can change the appraisal method. Her statement has been confirmed by Lisa Brewer and Corey Gunnerson, valuation specialists with the Department of Revenue. The assessor, they stated the, the assessor can use one or any combination of appraisal method. No one method is mandated. Krista never stated she needed approval from the Department of Revenue as the commissioners continued to claim. The commissioners claim assessing and collecting, collection of taxes is not your job. But RCW 3632120 powers of legislative authority states, number four, fix the amount of county taxes to be assessed according to the provisions of law and cause the same to be collected as prescribed by law. Five, allow all accounts legally chargeable against the county not otherwise provided for and audit the accounts of all officers having the care, management, collection or dispersment of any money belonging to the county or appropriated to its benefit. It is your, it is your job and time to start doing it. Citizens continue, citizens taxes continue to increase while wind taxes decrease. Will this be the same for all future solar sites? At this time, the answer is yes. You knew about this and didn't take the appropriate action to correct it. It's been nine years of depreciating revenue from the wind facility, a large sum of tax revenue lost, which becomes an additional burden to all the citizens of the county. It's time to stop giving wind and future solar tax breaks and all their special favors. Time to start placing the needs of the citizens first. Citizens, you are paid to represent.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. All right, back in the room. Come forward.
About maybe 20 years ago, 20, not quite that long. I used to be in here almost every week with different people, talking to commissioners at that time, Don Struck, Ray Thayer, Joan Fry. Had lots of good conversations, lots of not good conversations. Sometimes they listened, sometimes they didn't. We lost more than we ever won, but we kept at it. The problem was that with them as, as it is now, lots of time they speak and I don't know what sticks in the brain when you hear it. At one time, I give them each one ear, earplug. And they said, well, it's only one, Ron. I said, I'm hoping what goes in the other side bounce around and maybe stick there for a while. I have, I brought some today for you. I go give them to you, but I don't, it's the emphasis I'm trying to put on. Lots of times I hear good stuff come to you folks and I don't hear the good answers. They, the citizens got to win once in a while. That's part of their, if they're, if they're participating in the whole process, the fact that they come in here, they, they have a thought, you know, I believe what happens lots of times it just goes away before I even get out of here. So I just, I'm just going to pass that along. In fact, Joan Fry just realized, I seen her not long ago and she walked up to me and said, Ron, I still got that earplug. And I also give them a cryon towel one time in their, in our career there and they still laugh about it. But I, the emphasis I have is listen sometimes and give an answer. You know, I, I don't, I don't come here all the time anymore. I don't, don't want to, but I don't, when I walk away from here, I'm not sure you really think anywhere along the lines I even talk. That's because you're on, you're on your own mission, I guess, so. But it's important, I just heard Wagner call, I heard Don Eldred, Del. And Del comes up with good stuff, CESE comes up with good stuff. I don't see lots of response to it. Once in a while, they got to say something right, I would think. Out of all their knowledge, and they're not dummies, Sherry, none of those people are dummies. They're trying to get across the point, but they don't ever get any good answer to their points. Some of them, they, they should be given credit for, I'm sure about that. But you won't do it because you want to do it only your way. Anyway, I won't waste any more of your time and I thank you for.
Before you, Mr. Chair, can I respond, please?
Yeah.
Because I, I want to have this conversation. You, you reference several of these things where are the, are these, are these, you know, that there are some good ideas that come. I completely agree, but I also know that especially some folks, they have a certain point of view and we cannot seem to get to any kind of common ground. And there are, you know, you, you speak about, you know, I've written down the notes so that I can respond. You know, Ms. Bosque's comment about, again, this sounds really good about this, that you're spending money, you know, the citizens are having to appeal, the counties, it's like, actually, that's not accurate. Those individuals are appealing a superior court's decision, not the county's decision. That's what's being appealed right now. Prior to that, it was the hearings examiner decision that was appealed. They just didn't like the outcome of it. And so they have every right to appeal that decision. That's not on us necessarily. It makes, it sounds like a good soundbite, but that's not actually the truth. The same thing with the six-year road plan that now suddenly Oak Ridge Road. And they're trying to make it sound like because of under canvas, now it got put on to the six. That project has been on the six-year road program for like 12 years, long before under canvas was even thinking about building a thing there. So again, that's my response. Those allegations have been made multiple times and we've answered them. I've answered them before and it doesn't seem to be, it's like people need to listen back and forth. I don't think much is bouncing around the other way either. So that's, so it does make it really hard for me. Once I have tried and tried and tried, I do kind of give up.
You shouldn't give up. There should be conversations back and forth until you can come up with something. Maybe, you maybe not get the total plan or maybe not get everything to one side or the other.
Right.
But some give somewhere if you talk about it more. I know what I, with the commissioners I used to work with in those days, we did have some pretty hot discussions. We didn't have quite the same routine that you guys have, but we would have some pretty good hot conversations. And we would get a little bit, like I, I said, we won some.
But didn't you, once the conversation was over and that you had gotten, you know, that you didn't come back the next week and have the same conversation again?
Right.
And then the next week and have the same conversation again? And the next week and have the same conversation again?
Well, it's, it's a matter of there's not a lot of trust, not a lot of trust between the citizens and you folks.
I disagree with that. I think there is not a lot of trust between certain citizens and us.
I'm not saying all citizens.
No, I'm not saying most citizens. I don't think you can undermine, although people, we have basically the last two years, it has been basically character assassination for the last two years. And even with that, I still talk to lots and lots and lots of people. And the vast majority of them, I am not getting, it is, I would say your statement is not accurate. I would say, yes, some people based on, you know, they have, you know, if you, we learn over time. If you keep saying the same thing, even if it's wrong over and over and over again, some people start to listen to that. But other folks that have a little more history and understand, they, they stopped listening a long time ago.
The point of it is, in my, my perspective, I, I hear lots of stuff outside from those people or other people that I know. The problem is, is, is the participation from the citizens. I know lots of citizens don't like what they hear, but they don't speak out. They don't come and participate. That was the number one thing years ago when I was, we had a political action committee. We strive to get people, we strive to get lots of people. I used to tell people to show up at the commissioners meeting with toothpaste dribbling down their chin like they were having a frenzy or something, you know, to deal with them. It was a joke, but you could, I could deal with those folks that way. And we didn't win them all. We fought lots of them. We won once in a while, lose most of the time. In fact, my friend and I that both retired here, one day he said, Ron, you retired here. And I said, I did too. I'm quitting this after four years, but we did some good in four years. These, these people have to do some good too. The ones that are participating, I know lots of them. Talk, I talked to them a lot at times and they have smart brains and they do lots of checking into this and checking into that. And they, they just don't throw it out because they're dumb. They throw it out because they're smart and they're hoping that some of it would stick with you guys. I could give you these now or you don't need them or you wouldn't use them anyway. Anyway, I gotta go after that. Thank you very much, Lisa, talking back to me today. I appreciate that.
So Ron, we do have, so you just noticed, we just used 10 minutes on this back and forth, which is three more people who did not get a chance to speak.
I'm sorry for them.
And that is the reason why we have this the way it is, so that we can hear from, from the public and we can get into that discussion. Now, I'll always take earplugs because I have a sawmill and a chainsaw and everything else. On top of that though, many times, Ron, you've came in and said your piece and then you get up and you walk out the door. When you walk out the door, you're not here to listen to what we have to say in response.
That's because I expect it to be responded to just like I just got. That was a good, to me, that fulfilled my need for what I was doing. I know it took more time, that's why I was surprised you gave me that much time. But that, I appreciate it when you talk, even if I don't like it, at least.
And if, so after you get done with your three minute convert, comment, if you sit back down and wait, you will hear a response by the end of that conversation.
Okay, I just don't agree with that process.
Well, that was instituted for a reason, Ron.
Yeah, I know what you, I know exactly what you're telling me, but he just did it and I just talked back and it worked. I feel better about the answers I get when I get the answer. So I don't have to wait around till 30 more minutes or whatever timeframe. I appreciate it. I may be back again, maybe with a towel next time.
You can leave the toothpaste at home.
Yeah, that went out a long time ago. Ernie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? This is your last chance, either in the room or on the phone. Star six, unmute yourself, raise your hand, turn your video on. Okay.
Excuse me, Commissioner Anderson. I would like to clarify to Commissioner Soder that what the, the citizens are appealing is the Planning Director's SEPA decision for a mitigated determination of non-significance. And that is the decision made by the county planning director that the citizens appealed. That was our first initial appeal. That is a county entity and that is the county decision that the citizens appealed. So I just wanted to clarify that that is what we initially appealed is a county decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque. Commissioner Soder, would you like to respond to anything you've heard during public comment?
Couple of things. Mr. Eldred, you talk about the track, tax structure. I would, I would invite you, again, you're not saying anything that we have not been saying as far as, I was aware when the income method, when, when then Assessor Johnston changed that, that there was going to be impacts from that. But that's the assessor's decision as far as the valuation. So I'm not really sure, but I would invite the assessor, I think is in today at 1:40, so coming right up, to have a discussion about the taxing, how the system, the taxation system works on, on these large renewable projects. And that's, I agree, we need to understand that. But I also need to reinforce, contrary to Mr. Wagner is quoting the RCW that it, yes, we do the assessments, we don't, I can't reach in as a county commissioner and decide that whoever it is, if whether it's a school district, fire district, that I don't like their levy rate or what they're levying and change it. That is not authority that we have. We have, we're the final, say we have to sign off because we do, we're the ones, it's our authority that we're levying, levying the taxes. We're the final ones that sign off on that. But we don't have any, yeah, I'd love to go back to a school district and tell them, you know, that levy your, your voters approved? Yeah, I think it's too much, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna just change that. Yeah, no, I don't have, you're, you're assuming authority that the board does not have. I would be curious too as to, and you can answer next week, Mr. Wagner, as far as your statement about you knew and you did not take appropriate action. I would like to know what you think, what was the appropriate action that the board was supposed to take in 2013 when then Assessor Johnston changed the taxation system? And I'm going to stop there.
All right, well, you, you hit on most of the ones I was thinking about. In terms of Mr. Eldred, where a company buys its solar panels or any of its products from, we have no control over that. That is not within our purview. That is not something that we would like to have control over because we firmly believe in people's rights to buy whatever they want, wherever they want. It is a free market society. And whether it enriches the Communist Chinese Party or not, we have no say in that. As, as I've always said, people like to think we're God, but we're definitely not. Mrs. Bosque, in terms of forest resource lands, I think you mean the resource land zoning designation, not forest resource lands. I don't think we have any forest resource lands within the Houston BZ subarea. As to the fight against people death trap against its location, that is not something that we look at, that is something that the fire departments look at. All of these things, I would believe, have been mitigated in, in that SEPA determination of mitigation. Whether you agree with them on what the fire chief or anyone else says or not, that is between you and them. And as Commissioners Soder mentioned, it is always your right to appeal a decision if you do not feel that that is correct. That is enshrined in our laws, that is a part of the process. Making statements and accusations that the people are having to fight their own government and pay, and spend their own money, that is a part of the process. In fact, if we were to sit up here and say, Ms. Bosque, we don't like that you're planning or want to build something on your property and we're telling you no, you would be fighting us that same exact way because we all want to be able to do what we want on our property. There is a process in which you have to go through. What you've asked for continually over and over and over again, if we were to implement that, that would be taking people's rights away from them before they have the ability to apply for the right to do something on their property. on their property. I just hope that you can see things from both sides. As to Mr. Barta, I believe we have lost our health officer, but what I can say is, having served on the state boards as well as the conservation district, I 100% understand how this is changing. CAFOs used to be for large confined area feeding operations, and now we have CAFO permits for two cow dairies in Trout Lake. And whether it's on five acres or 10 acres or 20 acres, I see this steamrolling coming for all agriculture. And I know how long it takes to write one of those confined area feeding operation plans. And yes, I'm very concerned. And when people say that we don't listen, when somebody comes up here and provides us the information and does it in a kind and courteous manner, we're far more likely to spend our limited amount of time actually looking into it so that we can write letters of support. And when you have an ask that is reasonable and responsible, whether it's supporting something or not supporting something, we do look into it. And we write letters of support all of the time for things. So thank you for bringing this forward to Mr. Barta. I had not seen this new updated WAC. And as for Mr. Wagner, there is the RCW, but then whenever you look at an RCW, you should also look at the WACs like Mr. Barta prepared for us because there's what the legislature intends, and then there's what the government creates rules about and how it's going to implement those. And those things need to be taken together on how we are stuck implementing codes and policies and everything from the state. With regards to your statement, the powers of the legislative authority, which is to fix the amount of county taxes to be assessed, what that means is, is that we create the budget process that we're just starting, and we come up with a budget of what it, how much money it's going to take in order to do our job. And then we get to fix that assessed value, or not the assessed value, that amount of money. It is then, usually what we end up having to do is we live within our means because we can only raise 1% more money per year, plus, you know, new construction and everything else, which we're about to hear from the assessor on. So I'm not going to speak anymore to that. But in regards to Mr. Consella, when you say, we don't listen, we don't pay any attention, we don't do anything, I agree. Many of these people have really good ideas, and we have implemented those ideas. We are changing the way that we assess fees in this county. Now, everyone is going to be paying for the time that they spend, whether it's processing your conditional use permit application, whether it is your building permit, fees are going up in response. You said that we do not charge staff time. Well, we are charging staff time, so you are going to get exactly what you want. It's just everybody has to be equal, and everybody is going to be getting charged staff time. There's a base fee, but once you go over that normal number of hours that it takes, everyone will be charged. So the public can definitely thank you, Mr. Wagner, for bringing this forward. And we have remedied the situation. Let's see if there was anybody else. I think I have gone over time. So with that, I would like to say thank you for everyone who provided public comment today for the back and forth with Mr. Consella. We are going to close public comment because we are just a little bit behind now, and we're already following behind. I'm sorry, public comment is closed. You are welcome to comment next Tuesday at 1 o'clock. If you have something that you would love to say, you're more than welcome to email me or call me, JacobA@ClickItAtCounty.org. Moving forward, we are going to move into the public meeting to consider the approval of short plat, SPL 2021-28. Applicants are Jim and Patricia Farah.
Okay, SPL 2021-28 is a proposal to create three lots from parcel 04163207750300 in that Golden Dale vicinity off of Wing Road. The admin review of this short plat has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road health, planning, and treasurer's office. All conditions of preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds it's in the public's interest to approve this short plat, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of SPL 2021-28 applicants, Jim and Patricia Farah.
Do you have any?
No, really straightforward.
I mean, it's as straightforward as straightforward gets.
Three rectangles out of a bigger rectangle. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to grant final approval to SPL 2021-20. The applicants are Jim and Patricia Farah.
I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right. While we're working on signing this, Casey?
The juvenile court administrator is unable to join me today, but he received resignation from his office manager, and so he is seeking verbal to post for his office manager position. Steps one through three. It's a current position within his budget, all that good stuff.
Thank you.
You are. All right. Next up, elected official report, Assessor Krista Schroeder.
Good afternoon, ladies.
Good afternoon. How are you guys today?
Great. Looking for an education.
Yeah.
Okay.
Enlighten me.
So with me today is Chief Appraiser Billy Bear, and your next assessor, by the way. I did wanted to clarify one thing on the, on your agenda. It stated that I'd be talking about property taxes levied for collection for the 2024, and we will actually be assessing solar this year for collection next year, as well as the ongoing wind facilities. So we're before you today, once again, to explain the valuation of wind and solar facilities. We are happy to be here to address the facts and to dispute the misinformation that's been discussed in the public repeatedly. Our office is required to follow Washington State RCWs and WACs when assessing property. WAC 45807030 states that all property must be valued and assessed at 100% of true and fair value unless otherwise provided by law. WAC 458070302 goes on to state in determining true and fair value or highest and best use, the assessor may use a sales approach, which is the market approach, a cost approach, or an income approach, or a combination of the three. The cost and income approaches shall be dominant factors, dominant factors, in considering and determining true and fair value in cases of property of a complex nature or property not having a record of sale within five years and not having a significant number of sales of comparable property in our general area. In determining which approach to utilize to value a parcel, we ask ourselves, is the approach systematic, uniform, logical, consistent, and is the data we need readily available? WAC 458070304, in valuing a lot, tract, or parcel of real property, we must determine the true and fair value of the land excluding the structures or growing crops. The assessor must also determine the true and fair value of any structure on the land. The total value of the land and structures cannot exceed 100% of the true and fair value of the total property as it exists at the time of appraisal. So taking into account what I just explained, if parcels have a change in use, say from farming to a lease for solar, we may change the approach to value. There are certain steps that we take when we do that. We determine the major contributors to value. We request and collect the data, and we analyze the data and determine an approach to value. To collect the data for the properties that were in farm and ag and are no longer in farm and ag, we requested data from the solar companies and the landowners. We discussed the process with appraisal experts and are ongoing discussing it with the Department of Revenue. We want to be sure that we're within the recommended guidelines and appraisal standards. One thing that we have to remember is all assessments have to be equitable and uniform for that type of property. The value, we value the majority of the parcels in our county by a sales approach. However, we do have a few that are income or cost approach values. There seems to be confusion in the difference between assessing the land beneath a solar facility versus assessing the facility itself. Both approaches are very clear. They've been in the laws since prior to, what is it, like 2011, prior to 2011. So that brings us to personal property. Personal property is generally valued using the cost approach. The acquisition cost includes freight, trade-in allowance, installation, and any fees incurred to get the machinery operational. Original cost, no less depreciation, is a basis for valuation of personal property as the information is easily obtainable, and this method lends itself to readily to computerized mass appraisal format and with trend and depreciation tables easily updated. In fact, RCW 8444203 specifically states county assessors must refer to this guidance, including cost-based appraisal methods and industry-specific valuation tables when valuing renewable property, renewable energy property. The legislature had proposals before them this year to change the way wind and solar would be assessed. And that outcome changed that RCW a little bit in that it required the Department of Revenue to work with stakeholders on reviewing the trend, which is the depreciation schedule that it's on. But it still leaves the cost-based method as the current recommended methodology for assessing wind and solar. They update the personal industrial property valuation guidelines every year. Every year, they review certain industries to be sure that the trend table is accurate for the equipment as its lifespan currently is. The guidelines are based on the typical physical depreciation and functional obsolescence for assets that have been maintained in average condition. The percent good table estimates a percentage of remaining value of the asset. There have been a lot of questions on why solar and wind facilities are picked up as personal property and under the cost approach with the depreciation. And WAC 45812005, Section 2I, defines personal property as machinery or equipment of any commercial or industrial business which operates on leased land or rented quarters. Such machinery or equipment is a trade fixture, i.e. the tenant's personal property, no matter how firmly it may be attached to the landlord's realty. I have been in conversation with Lisa Brewer, specifically she has reviewed the information that's been submitted by Lund Hill for assessment purposes, and she agrees with currently carrying on with the way wind facilities have been assessed since Darlene changed the assessment based on the recommended methodology of the Department of Revenue. Prior to that, there was no recommended methodology from the Department of Revenue.
If I may, Mr. Chair, can you, Lisa Brewer, can you tell me, who is that?
So she is one of the personal property appraisers. She is the one that re-
With Department of Revenue?
Yes, with the Department of Revenue, sorry. She is the one who audits our wind facilities. Every year, they randomly choose a wind facility to audit. We have been in the high 90% of assessed value in every audit since I've been in office. Usually like 96, 98%. That means we're, you know, as close to 100% that you can be with, you know, with human error, correct? I would assume that they would carry on and start randomly selecting solar facilities to audit as well. So even though the RCW states that I could choose a different method, it also states that there has to be-
Compelling reason to do so.
Thank you. Yes. What's the definition of a compelling reason? Is it two screaming members of the public? I don't know. You know that you did propose legislature to change the way. So as commissioners, you all have been active in the appropriate process to change the way something is being assessed, which is to go to your legislatures and propose something different. The other thing that I would like to state is all structures within our county, so structures, we're talking about houses, buildings, barns, sheds, garages, any of that kind of stuff, they are all assessed and are also depreciated based on the tables in our assessment software. So, you know, once again, we have many things that we assess that depreciate. The difference is that we then-
We can apply a market factor-
Right.
-based off of market conditions. So kind of out, or is another balancing act with the assessed values?
Correct. I think that pretty much covers, you know, the basis of the assessments. There's also been some misinformation about how much taxes wind facilities have paid. I don't get into taxes necessarily. I leave that to Greg. However, for 2022 tax year, the wind facilities, less the state-assessed facilities, were valued at $602,676,789. That does not include their secondary personal property listings if they're, if they're holding like all their office furniture and all of that kind of stuff in a, in a different, a different name. But $602 million is significant amount of taxes, especially in a county that, you know, were assessed at over $4 billion for 2022 tax year. I guess that leaves us open for any questions you may have.
So the depreciation schedule, say a solar facility's lifespan, according to them, might be 20 years or 25 years. Do you depreciate it then on that 25-year schedule based on how long they say that is going to last?
It's not what they say. It's what the Department of Revenue. They have the industrial valuation guidelines every year, and that has the trend table for everything that people report. It's like 20 or 30 pages long. And it gives you, you know, a list of the different equipment and its lifespan, and it'll depreciate down to 15% good, and then that's where it'll stay. So the other thing that both wind and facility and any other commercial business, whether it's farmers or McDonald's or gas stations or whatever it is, is when they replace an item or if they refurbish an item, they then add that to their personal property listing, and that'll increase their value. Typically, personal property does not get a new construction bump. We've talked about this. But wind, solar, and biomass has been taken out of the personal property, no new construction list, and added, you know, legislature specifically to be able to increase taxing districts' budgets by the dollar amount of new construction for those facilities. That increase in taxing districts' budgets is what creates the eventual shift of taxes to, you know, every other landowner. And it also, it increases everybody's levy rate because real property can't keep up with depreciating property.
So knowing that that tax shift is there, if wind and solar were taxed on the income-based method, wouldn't that flatten that curve? And would that then still, would that eliminate the tax shift?
When you get into would it, what ifs, I mean, it's hard to say. I have not sat down and ran the numbers to determine, and I won't state anything that I don't know for a fact. I mean, it seems reasonable that it wouldn't have that. But it's also going to depend upon, are they still getting new construction bumps? Because it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter how you're valuing it. It doesn't matter if you value it cost or income or whatever. If that initial value that goes on there- you know, gets added into their budgets, it's still going to eventually be some type of offset, I believe.
So, right, so if you, if you use the income-based method, but you didn't have the tax bump, you know, if it didn't get added to new, so it didn't depreciate down, instead you were just valuing it and not putting on as new construction, you're just there paying according to that, would that then eliminate that?
As long as their income would continue stable to increasing, it seems reasonable that it would.
And so isn't that the reason why we use the income-based method under Van?
No, Van used the, a modified income-based method because at that time, there was no other method known in Washington State. And, and it wasn't modified. It was a very low value. If, if you, and I should have brought those numbers. If you look at the value that Van had on wind facilities, and then you look at the first year that Darlene put them on as the cost-based, Van's values were significantly lower than, even though the first year Darlene put them on, they were still depreciated based on the initial implementation year.
Right, so when I talked to Van way back then, it was, you know, he said it so that it would, we would, we would retain a certain amount of money coming in over a long period of time at the same level, thus not having to worry about the declining on, you know, the valuation, and that was why he said it kind of at a midpoint. It's the same discussions we've had at the, at the state, you know, trying to find a midpoint.
Right.
Whereas then when Darlene came on board, any new wind construction, you start at full market value and it slowly depreciates down, and after five years or whatever, you're, you finally, you've hit Van's point, you know, what he was getting, and then it went down from there, and as it went down, everybody else's had to come up.
So as an assessor, Van did the best that he thought he could at the time. He talked to the facilities. He talked to other assessors. He talked to the Department of Revenue. There was no known methodology at that time. Since then, the Department of Revenue came up with a recommended methodology, and Darlene changed it to that. I, I'm not saying any method is better than the other method. I'm just saying that this is the recommended methodology. And for uniformity in assessments, that's the way I've continued to do it. My thing is propose legislature to change it. You know, if you look at the income approach and you don't get a new construction bump, that's not going to help the taxing districts either, which that was also one of the entities that were in the discussion with Van when he, when he set the values as he did.
So on the income-based approach, it doesn't help any of the junior taxing districts?
Not if they don't get a new construction bump.
So, so then with the, with the businesses that are on the income-based method currently?
They do do new construction if it's real property, yes.
Oh, so there is a real property bump?
Yeah. Anytime you increase value on real property, not anytime, I should be careful about that. When, when you, when you add value that qualifies as a new construction value, it, it can increase the district's budget amount if they choose to take it.
Like the Bickleton School District?
Yes, exactly like the Bickleton School District.
So I'm just, I know everybody's listening, so as I'm trying to understand this, when wind hit way back when, and the Bickleton School District, and we, we were on the income, hybrid income method, and the school district said, you know, we've got all these millions of dollars of new valuation, and we want to raise X number of dollars. And a good portion of that is going to be paid by the wind companies because they're on this flat rate, and we know how, what percentage they're going to pay and what percentage the public's going to pay. Once that gets shifted to the cost-based method, and it depreciates down, then every year, as it depreciates past that centroid point, all of the rest of the people
Yes.
The levy rates have to go up.
Yes.
But in that instance, though, because of the way it was being assessed with the income-based method, if it would have stayed there, then that percentage of who pays what would have stayed about the same, correct?
Probably. There, there, the, the problem is there's so many variables when you start doing the levy process. But yeah, if you have a stable assessed value, regardless of how that's achieved, you will have a more stable levy rate, depending upon the levy process factors, yes.
And, and maybe some folks that are maybe a little more familiar, because I was involved with some other stuff out in Bickleton when that was going on, as far as they had, you know, they were two or three years into their bond for the new school, which as I recall, and, and I don't, that their construction was they had purposefully, it was a really short, it was only 10 years because they had anticipated, they only had 10 years of exactly that. It was going to be level, and so if I'm recalling correctly, and maybe some locals on the east end here or central east can correct me, was that they kind of hurried up, you know, once things changed because they knew that shift was taking place, and they got that paid off. So that it isn't, so I'm kind of curious, when we had an earlier commenter about, you know, basically that the situation is like, to my knowledge at that time, and again, maybe they went out and did something different after that that I'm unaware of, was that the new school got paid off as far as the bond for that some time ago, and it's not really in play today with the depreciation of, there is depreciation going on because of the wind projects on their, just their general school levies and their everything out there, but it's not about the the bond for the new construction on the school.
Correct, and, and the bond was, was in addition to their budgetary levy rates, so they actually went out for a 10-year bond for a certain amount of money.
Right.
And that, I mean, they, they, they would get that above their regular budgeted amount.
So really what changed, though, with the depreciation is the who was, they're, they anticipated, you know, the wind farms were going to pay, you know, and I remember getting that kicked around at the time. It was like, you know, 80% of the new school is going to get paid for from wind, and the 20% is the regular people. With depreciation, what happened is wind didn't pay 80%, it went down, and the the regular taxpayers had to make up the difference in between the depreciation. And so it didn't, I mean, it still was a really good deal, but it was not kind of how it had been billed to the voters when they put it out there.
Right, and, and the problem with giving
But again, that's all in the past.
Right, that is in the past. It's not, there's no current school bond, there's no, not for Bickleton anyway.
Right.
And that was all, yeah, and, and they did do specifically a 10-year because that was the
Kind of the window that they felt was comfortable.
Discussion at the time between Van and the wind facilities, the school, the districts, the DOR, and anybody else that he could pull in to try to figure out, you know, how to do this for the benefit of everybody.
Can I follow up, sure. So back to the appropriate action. As far as, yes, we have been working, we've been trying to work with the legislature to get some, at least some tools that are at least available locally to change how you do your job. Because again, we don't have just, you're
Correct. You cannot tell me how to assess
Tell you anything. That is your job that the people gave you, and I don't want to even talk about that.
Just like I can't tell you how to do your job.
Exactly, and I would push back if you did. But as far as the one thing that we did get was they're at least looking at that committee to look at those depreciation tables. When are, are we expecting maybe, because frankly, to me, the eight and a half percent doesn't seem, I know that's kind of industry standard, but I'm wondering if maybe they'll come back with a recommendation that when you run that depreciation schedule, these projects are not at 15% of their value when they're depreciated out in that period of time, that maybe they'll change that, that would give us some or do you have no, again, I'm asking you to look at the tea leaves in your professional
What the Department of Revenue was going to tell me, I would tell you already that, hey, this is the way it looks like it's going to go, but I have no idea.
I mean, have they modified those ta, you say they change them every year?
For, for different facilities when they review them, yes.
Right, so there's at least, there's, at least there's the, the process should work if they look at it and they, it looks like, yeah, maybe there's some, there's some validity to that this depreciation schedule is really not, the trending is not, it's too steep for the industry, that they could make change their recommendation.
I mean, they always could. I mean, they do it every year on different equipment, so that, I mean, that is a possibility, and they are reviewing it, so.
We got that.
So, I'm sorry, it's just I have no idea. You know, I've been screaming and hollering from the rafters that, you know, we're going to have an, an online facility this year. And, you know, there, there, there's not a lot of assistance out there when you need it. But, but, you know, Lisa Brewer from the Department of Revenue has reviewed the information that was submitted by Lund Hill. They agree with, you know, how it's submitted. They agree with the, the process that we will be doing with the facility. So I don't know, you know, what conversations the members of the public have had with Lisa, but I know that we are on target for statutorily and recommendation-wise on doing what we should be doing.
Okay, one, one more, please. Just because I want to make sure, because I, and I'm just kind of responding from what comments I've heard over the last several months. So on energy projects, solar being different than wind in that the underlying property, if it's, if it's, if it's pre-zoning or pre, was in farm and ranch, so it was an ag zoning.
Yeah, it's not a zoning.
Okay, yeah, I know, I know, I'm sorry. I hear, I hear, I hear Mochi's running down here right now, and you know as well, and I know better.
Right.
The So if it's, if it's tax designation
Yes.
is agriculture, and wind projects, historically, when the projects were placed on them, other than the land, you know, that was really specifically that stayed, the rest, the balance of the property stayed in ag because agricultural, the use was still continuing, and it could still qualify. Solar is, I'm curious, I mean, my understanding, and again, this is just from what I glean from our conversations, is that that is, that these projects, if the, they come out of the agricultural tax because it's very difficult for the agricultural use to still qualify. Is that true? Is that accurate?
Yes, in our
So there is no tax, ag tax break to solar companies?
Not in our county, so
We can only speak to our county.
The, the wind facility is different because if you look at the dirt, and I'm not talking about rolling up there and looking at the big, you know, wind towers, when you roll up there and you look at the dirt, the primary use of the majority of the property that has
Still agricultural.
It, it's still grazing cattle. It's still growing crops. The solar is different. They have specifically contractual agreements not to farm or graze within the fence boundaries of the solar facilities. And Lund Hill, as being the only fully permitted and completed solar project within our county, those parcels that are within the fence that have panels and supportive structures have been removed from the open space farm and ag program. Additional taxes and interest has been paid.
Just like they would be for anybody else.
Yeah, just like
If I stopped farming,
Yeah.
I'm out. I got to pay my seven years back and
So, so once that came off the program, the question would be, well, we know what the zoning is.
Sorry, I use that zoning.
What is the, what is the use code now? Is it, is it under industrial use code?
I was in the saddle a lot last week, so.
It will be utility because it's a utility, right? It's an elec, it's electricity. It's creating electricity, so it'll be a utility. And it'll be assessed based on its highest and best use.
Which is utility now, which has a much higher rate per acre than, say, a houses or development or
You could assume that. We're still working the numbers.
Right. And, and so as I understand it, in those contracts, the company will pay that difference in that taxation in a lot of those. So, but in answer to the questions, is that it's not still going to be taxed as farm ground?
It's not, and I've told everybody that's asked.
I believe you.
That it is not, and, and, you know, people that have inquired within my office have been told specifically that that property has already been removed. It was removed last year, so.
And so when, so the next question, though, would be, is when you remove it and you look at the last seven years, do you remove it at what it was being used for? So it'd be open space? Or do you remove it for what it's going to be, which is utility electricity?
So for open space, under the Open Space Act, RCW 8434, parcels are removed from those programs based on the actual assessed value, market value, minus the current use value. And that's by statute. Then they also get a 1% interest per month, and depending upon the removal from the program process, a 20% penalty on the additional tax. Forest is the one that does the current market value.
Oh, okay.
Designated forest, RCW 8433.
Right, so, but yes, everybody paid their seven years back taxes at whatever 70% interest on that seventh year?
Yes, but the problem with that is, it's not a problem. So a clarification and education of open space and forest removal fees, the taxing districts already received their money. So when property is in, in a, in a reduced assessed value program, for whatever reason, the districts still collect that money. They, they still collect their budget. It's just the levy rate is going to increase because of the reduced value. And that's whether it's a government property, a senior or disabled or veteran's exemption, or whether it's open space or designated forest or
The other people pay the difference to me, what your budget is.
So those
So then once it comes out and you pay all this back taxes.
Yeah, where does that go?
It's, it's not back taxes. It's, it's not back taxes. It, it is additional taxes. Because it goes to the taxing districts.
A portion by the
Yeah, so like, let's say EMS district has like a 50 cent levy, so for the parcel that would have paid 50 cents to the EMS district, the removal amount, you know, for that district is, they'll get that.
So in essence, it's a bonus to them because the EMS district already got the money. But once you pull that out, they're going to get additional monies they had not budgeted, and so it's kind of like a bonus check.
It's, it's an additional amount of money that they receive.
Over what they would have ever got.
Yeah.
So when, when are you hoping to have that done on what that utility value is going to be on the underlying ground?
Before September 14th.
I was going to say before November.
We've worked diligently with the Department of Revenue, and like she stated before, expert appraisers, the company itself, Lund Hill, and landowners, and that's kind of the process when we're trying to determine, we have to gather all of that data. We just don't want to just pull something out of the air. We've got to have something that will, like she said, be sustainable, maintainable, and uniform.
Needs to be, right, uniform, equitable, and it has to be defensible, is that I like you, and so I'm going to just, oh, I'm going to pick this number, or I don't like you, and I'm going to pick this other number. It has to actually be based on some sort of methodology and facts.
Yeah, right.
So, so I, I know exactly what we're going to hear next week. And that is, is that you, there is a recommended methodology, but you are
For the facilities.
For the, for the personal property, for the facilities, right? There is a recommended methodology.
Yes.
And what we're going to hear, and I'm sure you're going to hear, is if that is a recommended methodology, why are you going to follow the recommended methodology when you know that it's flawed in its execution because it creates a tax shift and a tax burden to all of the regular taxpayers who don't have multimillion-dollar corporations on their backs? Because what you're in essence doing is, is you're raising the construction value, so you're creating a new value. the construction value. So you're creating a new value on top of what the county's valuation is. And that is going to become a tax shift in a very short number of years to everyone else. Why would you, and when there is a compelling reason, I can already hear the voice in the back of my head, saying, with that compelling reason, would that not be that tax shift be a compelling enough reason to use the income based method? So that you can create a method of taxation that is level, much like the rates on the, their long-term contracts for their, for the energy production. Would that be a more fair, rational and reasonable way to do that with regards to solar? And since it's your first one, you'd have the ability to tax it at that. Thus be saying that everybody in the solar world is fair and taxed equitably in the same manner.
And it, so it's a compelling reason to assess it differently than all other facilities on leased land. That's what you're telling me. Because of the value, because of the value of wind and solar. Because you can't separate out. You can't say, well, solar is different than wind. It's all renewable energy. Okay, I mean, there's some differences, but it's still a utility. It's still a renewable energy. So we can't, it would not be uniform and equitable to say, well, now that solar is new, even though it's a renewable energy, we're going to assess it this way. So the compelling reason, I mean, I, I personally don't see a compelling reason to assess them differently than all other commercial and industrial property in Clickatack County. The, the issue is that districts get a new construction bump. And the issue is that the value of the wind facilities is such a tremendous amount of the total value of our county. So those are issues and, and they're valid ones. But I don't think that it's a compelling reason for me to change just a single type of industry's way of valuing compared to everything else.
So, we've changed it before. And this would be like a question for the prosecuting attorney or, you know, a specialized attorney. Say there is a new assessor comes on board who sees it differently than you, right?
Yeah.
And, and could that new assessor say, well, this is the way it's been done and this is the recommended methodology? But this is a compelling reason to me is, is that because of our county and our renewable resource capital of the Northwest and that this tax shift is occurring, that is unconscionable for the regular ratepayers and taxpayers of the county. Can you make that kind of a change? Because it seems to me like, like it was, it was wrong. Like, we started out on the income methodology and.
But, but it wasn't even a full income.
Sure, it wasn't a full income. I mean, but we started out on this methodology. And then it changed from that to a depreciating scale. And so those that were already paying here got the benefit because they didn't have to pay this part because it's already been depreciated out down to here. So we got a big bump in revenue the first year, I recall. And that's what she was selling. We'll get a big bump in revenue.
No.
Darlene.
No. No, no, no.
Coming on board, didn't we?
No. So, yes, the only time you get a bump is when it's new construction, regardless of how it was assessed. Okay, so y'all got a bump, the way Van assessed it, because it was allowed to be new construction. The change that the prior assessor did, unless a new facility came on during her time, did not do anything with anybody getting an increase in their budget.
I believe we had new ones coming up.
Yeah, I, I think you did, yeah.
And so that was when she was selling it. She said, if we do it on this cost-based method, then I get to do the whole amount right off the board. And that'll be the new construction and there'll be a big bump.
Yeah, that's true.
And so, and then what, I remember the conversation was, well, that's great for the first three years. And then what? And then we make less money.
And she's, well, you, once again, you don't make less because, unless you all ask for less, remember? The, the shift is the levy rate with the taxing, the, the landowners.
I, I meant, I meant, we pay more as taxpayers.
Yes, yes.
We get the amount of money we get. So, I guess.
I, I mean, it could, there, a, a new assessor or even myself, we could look at that. What I look at is uniformity and, and equity in the assessment world. And that's why I've chosen not to, not to change it. Kittattack County is going to have a solar facility, I believe, constructed this year. So they'll be, I believe, assessing it next year. They have some, they're going to start being assessed next year. Yakima County has ones that are in the permitting process. I believe those have been permitted through the state, not the local. So they're going through, even though Yakima County has a moratorium. And so, you know, as more and more facilities are constructed within the state, I believe it will be looked at. And, and they'll look at that in inequality for the citizens of the county.
Because I always worry that, you know, if I was the business owner and say it was a mini storage unit or something. And, and I was, I was, I was getting taxed on a depreciating method and I'm down at the 15% or say. And then a new assessor comes on board and says, well, you're on leased ground. And we're going to assess you based on the income base, base method because we know how much money you make a year and what it is. And, and then your, your, so your taxes could bump up quite a significant amount. And I always worry about that legal jeopardy for us that we're, we're, you know, saying that we're changing the method of taxation while it's still fair and accurate and uniform amongst all, you know, mini storage facilities. You're still going to take a huge increase in your taxes. And is that something we have to worry about? Because I know that this is not going to end the.
The, the legality is obviously are not something that I can comment on. That's, I, I'm not an attorney. However, my goal, the assessor's office goal, is not to determine the the most, the, the, not to determine the way that taxing districts can get the most money. You know, we have assessment guidelines and those are what we need to stay within. We wouldn't change a way we assess something just because it would increase their value and possibly give districts more money if it was new construction. That's, that's not our purpose. Yes, highest and best use is part of our purpose. And when a use changes, we do look at that. I, I mean, I, I, my recommendation would be that if, as commissioners, you all are proposing new legislature, is to make sure that you work with assessors on uniformity and equitability. The problem that the assessors voiced to me, because they all are like, what's your county doing and calling me and wanting to know, was that it was, there was choices in that the facility in the county could determine, well, we'll do it cost-based or we'll do it based on a, a PILT-type way. And so you have some assessed this way and some that are just not even assessed at all, but they're paying through a contract agreement with the county. And so where was the uniformity and equitability in that? That was the concern of, of all of the, the assessors that called me and wanted to know what, what was going on. They did, they did have concern with, you know, if it's a smaller county with a potential tax shift, you know, like we have here. They were concerned about that.
So I'm not thinking, I'm thinking it more of one large project
Yeah.
that could, you know, almost put, add 25 plus percent to the value of the county that over the course of 10 years can be depreciated out. Thus creating a huge, because of the, you know, unless, unless the new, new valuation, like you, you add new construction, the valuation goes up. But you're not depreciating or you're not decreasing that value by how much they depreciate there. And so that's, let's see, if you, if you are, if, if the value of the county, you know, the, the overall assessed value was going down commiserate with the decrease in how much somebody's, you know, writing that down, then I don't think you'd have the same issues.
Right, correct.
The value of the county would be declining. But for some reason, we put a new, a new value up here and then you get it depreciated out, but your value stays up here.
Depreciates down. And, and I'm a huge person in terminology. It doesn't depreciate out like you do with the IRS. It depreciates down to a 15% in-use value. It could be a little higher than that if, you know, the Department of Revenue takes a look at it and they determine a new trend line for that particular thing.
Right. So it's, it's depreciating down to its, in essence, sunk cost.
A 15% in-use value.
Right. And, and, but, but when we create that new valuation of the overall county, correct? Value, you know, it's a new construction, the county's assessed, total assessed value goes up. But this is depreciating down. But the county's value, you're not depreciating that off of the county's value.
Right, no, you're correct. The, the.
And so why is that?
The real, well, because real property is assessed based on 100% of market value typically established by sales. So, even though your structures depreciate, you then adjust them for the market. And so they don't, you know, keep going down.
Right. So that's, that's the real property.
But it is, but it, it, but it is theoretically possible that the value could go, it's not, it's the, I think we're mixing apples and orange. Right, it goes down. But I think what we're really talking, but the issue is always about, it's the levy rate. It's not the, it doesn't matter if the, what the, I like, the, like, our levies are set to dollar figures. As the, goes up and down, we, if the levy, if the value goes up, it doesn't make, we don't make more money unless it's new construction.
Correct.
It just changes the rate of what you're paying. So if the value goes down, it doesn't change, it, we still can, we still have to generate X number of dollars.
Right.
It's like the, until we hit the caps, which thankfully we've never done, but.
If the taxing districts never increased their budget and the assessed value of their district went down, your levy rate would go up.
Right, to make up the difference.
They did not, once again, change their budget and the assessed value of their district went up, their levy rate would go down.
Right.
And it's not, you know, as Jake stated, it's not equitable in the depreciation of the, of the wind and solar facilities because their value is such a huge amount of our county's value. It's, it, it doesn't.
Well, I mean, and that is, I mean, my argument with, or at least my debate with the legislature over why they need to take a look at this, is I don't think our system was ever designed for having personal property be such a huge
No.
percentage of, it, it wasn't. And it needs to be looked at because there are these unintended consequences where they, it's, it's like, personal property is like an add-on. It's like stuck on there typically. Is that the real value of this is in, you know, real estate and houses and stuff that depreciate, but the market resets them. And you end up with a pretty stable to rising values. But then we, in this county, we added this thing that's personal property that is huge. And it's like the system is just not built for that. And it needs to be amended and modified because of the problem that it's created and they're, you know, they at least were listening. And I, and I think, yeah, anything in the future, we need to have the, it really should be the assessors and the, really kind of leading with the, with, well, no, I think so. I, I, I understand commissioners are more.
I mean, we need to be involved in, in, to be sure that, you know, what's proposed is uniform and equitable because I think, once again, that was the problem this year.
But it ultimately is an assessment tool, which is in your area of authority. It's not.
And, and I think that'll happen. Um, you know, right, right now, the DOR is just talking to stakeholders. They're not really including us. I did say, why not?
So we're not stakeholders?
We're not a stakeholder. Clickatack County assessor is not a stakeholder.
Why, you know, the counties were not involved in this? And I was told that they're not including the counties at this time. Not that they might not be later. I don't, I don't know. But I think that, you know, in talking to all of the assessors this year, that, that was part of the conversation of, of no one expected personal property to be such a huge part of the total assessed value of, of the county as a whole. Because we're, we're a fairly small county, not in size, but in, in population. And I think that, I, I think that's definitely something that will be addressed and looked at. But I mean, there, there is a process in place. There is a process that, that's been in place. It's uniform, it's equitable, it's the way we're going to do it until they come up with, they have until January 1st. And they're just now starting meetings. So, we'll see how that works.
We'd love to be considered stakeholders.
Email your DOR. Do you have any DOR contacts? No? Okay. I will.
Share those, please.
Yes, yes.
No, I mean, because we both went through it with WASC, with trying to, you know, get legislation and, you know, if the assessors go, whoa, 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 we don't like this, there's no way it's going to pass.
Right. Well, that's not true. Some still does. We're working through one of those right now. So, yes, it, it, but yeah, definitely.
Yeah, you're right.
But definitely.
That's the exception that proves the rule.
Yeah. But definitely work with assessors when, you know, on, on, on proposals. I, I mean, it's not that I'm against changing it. It's, it's just, if we change it, you know, then, so it's like, what do you, what one do you choose? You know? Because once again, my job isn't to choose the largest, the one that creates the biggest tax bill. That's not my job. It's uniformity and equity, equity and, and.
But, but in essence, by the choice and following the recommendations, you create the largest tax bill for the regular taxpayer over the length of a project.
Thanks, Jake.
I mean, in essence, by following the recommendation of the state, that's what, that's what ends up happening. And so.
And uniformity and equity be, equity as well for those facilities. You know, that's what you're all forgetting. This is just another company that has personal property on leased land in our county. I'm not advocating for them at all. I mean, I know they'll be twisted and said that, but that's not the case. It's that all commercial industrial property pays personal property and depreciates. It's a fact. So by, by adding, oh, by the way.
So then why is there the income based method to begin with, if that's the case?
For personal property? I have no idea. I, I mean, I wasn't here when they enacted the original, you know, ways to, to assess things. But, but personal property is by the cost, cost method throughout the state.
That's why they don't want to own the land.
I mean, I think of that when I had the construction company, I submitted my thing and it was all of my equipment and all your chainsaws and saw stuff. And it's, it was what it costs and it's just on a depreciation thing. And I pay taxes based on, that's how it works. So, yeah, I get, it is, we have to always remember that, is that it's, it has to be the same for everybody.
Right, yeah. And that's my argument because I like to treat everybody the same. I don't care who you are, who you are, who you know, who you don't know, how much money you do or do not have. I try to treat everybody the same. I mean, that's.
And I completely agree with that. But I do want the legislature to recognize that there is a problem.
Right, with that process.
With that process. And I'm not suggesting what the solution is, but there needs to be.
Somebody needs to though.
Somebody needs to have a solution. We made a stab at it and it was, didn't go real well.
I mean, honestly, the easiest, the easiest thing that I can think that would, that would fix that is, is as you depreciate, like with these massive projects that have a huge impact, as you depreciate that value, which might be millions of dollars down, which might be more than the value of new construction in the county that year even.
Yeah, it typically is.
That should be coming off the top of what the assessed value of the county is because that's personal property that you added to new construction that, as this is depreciating down, if this is coming down as well, you'll keep, you'll keep the same rate and everything would be square.
Well, then you just, you get rid of the new construction bump and that would fix that. Where you get more revenue when the project goes on, the district does, but it doesn't get added to the, it now is not the high watermark.
Maybe a single year bump.
It's a single year bump. And then as it depreciates, you actually get less revenue and districts shouldn't count, county whoever should not count. Because that's really what, in the perfect world, that's what it should be. It should be not, that is not base stable funding without the shift going on. And you should budget accordingly.
There's some districts that don't take their new construction bump. I mean.
They don't, but I can guarantee you, they may not, but they're, they only have the control over the part that they control.
Right, yes. Not, right. Because you can't tell all the other districts.
I can't tell the other districts. Well, but they, but it's also, yeah, I can't tell any other districts. I can't say, oh, you school district, fire district, you're not taking your, your new construction bump. We can choose to not take it for the county general fund and the county road fund, which is, you know. which is, you know, combined, you know, less than half of the total of what most people are paying.
Right.
So we could mitigate it, although we need our new construction too.
Well, that's what's keeping us above the 1%.
Exactly.
So one of the things that can happen when property, the, the way property is valued is changed, is appeals. So if y'all remember, we had, oh, like seven or eight, I think, facilities that were assessed, you know, under Van's way. And then when, when it was changed to the Department of Revenue's recommended methodology way, we had an appeal that was very significant and costly as well. So, I mean, there's, there is that out there. So you want to have, you know, you want to be, you want to be very firm on your, on your value and your valuation when you, when you go to change it. And you should let the, the, you know, like you said, all the stakeholders should be told if something like that is going to change.
Right. As always, thank you so much for the discussion and
I just want to say, if anybody wants to know anything about these facilities that I can legally give out, come into my office, Eli or I, Jessica, we, anybody in there, we are willing to give you the facts, not what your neighbor's saying, not what a particular person is saying, but the actual facts of the matter.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of these days, we'll remember everything you said.
Yeah.
But now we can come back to the video.
I have two minutes, go ahead.
You all are always welcome to come and have this.
Yep. Rescue Canal, do we have?
All right, we are back in session. Would you like to pay the bills? Okay, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of $451,857.70 for the date ending August 8th, 2022.
I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Want to do consent?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda, all four items.
There's a motion and I will step down and second the motion to approve the consent agenda with four items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do you want to sign the agreement?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have before us, under unfinished, we have a, before us, an agreement between Clickatack County Public Health Department and Chris Devlin Nueva for the purpose, and I apologize, Chris, for butchering your name, for the purpose of providing expertise and technical guidance on community-based behavioral health services in Clickatack County. The contractor will be paid at a rate of $125 an hour for approximately 20 hours a week, not to exceed $78,000. This is effective August 1st, 2022 and ending January 1st, 2023. My motion is to approve and sign the agreement.
I will step down and second the motion. And all those in favor of signing the contractual agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do you have anything for board pending?
Not anymore. No, no, I'm good.
It has on here, potential executive session to discuss negotiations on a publicly bid contract as long as they determine a public discussion because the likelihood of increased costs, 2023, 2024.
I'm happy with having that in open session.
Are you?
I am.
Really?
Yeah. But I, I will defer to the, I'm fine either way, it's fine. I don't, I don't know, other than
I mean, I would like, like a little bit of direction from the prosecutor. Is that something you feel would be best in executive session? Is that something you feel that could be in executive session?
You have a desire to engage in substantial negotiations?
I really don't. My, my, you know, based on the response that we received, my, I, I'm not particularly interested in negotiating. I'm, I'm more interested in rejecting the offer and looking at a different, you know, and whether that needs to be in executive session as far as the, what other alternative, you know, what are our alternatives? But I don't, but as far as, yes, if we were going to have a discussion about the proposal or the response, then that should be in executive session.
All right.
If we're not, then it doesn't need to be. I, I don't think so, but I, I'll defer to the chair. I'm fine either way.
I think it'd be best if we enter into executive session in accordance with RCW 4231101D to discuss negotiations on a publicly bid contract for 10 minutes. And just so everyone online knows, we will not be doing any more business when we come back. So Zoom land is going to be shut off. I would say thank you to everyone for joining today's meeting and hopefully we all learned something. Thank you and have a great day.